If you wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items, please sign up on the sheet near the entrance door to the council chambers. You'll be called to speak during the public comment section. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed under public hearing, public comment, will be taken at that time. Roll call, please.
Mayor Don Williams?
Here.
Mick Anderson?
Here.
Chester Norakis?
Here.
Wes Ryan?
Here.
Roger Sprague?
Here.
Susan Walkie?
Here.
Kit Ward?
Here.
Would you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. All right. Consent agenda, no items. Comments from citizens present on agenda, non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their times to others and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The mayor has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and signed up to speak. When you do come up, just state your name. You don't have to give us your address or anything else unless you'd like someone to send you stuff in the mail. Paul Long.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Paul Long. I have a personal mailbox at 2150 Southeast Highway 101. I'm here tonight just to give you an update, to let you know that I'm still surviving in this beautiful city. I look at that beautiful picture there and I see nine miles of smiles. Tonight, I'm smiling. I'm not as angry as I had been before you before, but I'm asking you to consider again ordinance 205-9. It makes my life very difficult to live here. And for those of you that don't know, 205-9 says no parking, sleeping, or camping on public property from 2:30 to 5:00 in the morning. Well, right now, I live daily from the little park behind Ace in Taft and park my RV on a striped spot in the daytime. At night, I pull over into the old Pines parking lot on private property, and so far, I've been safe. And I thank you for that. I wanted to bring up to you that on December 13th, 2015, the Supreme Court ruled that in the Ninth District for Los Angeles and San Francisco, that the police could no longer harass people living in their vehicles. I want to let you know that for 13 years, I've been living in vehicles. It's my lifestyle. It's something I choose, but it doesn't fit into the way the city wants me to live, so it's been very difficult. I have a police record for trespass. I can't name all the places that I've been asked to leave trespass. I have on the back of my RV, the numbers 86th permanently on the back. I'm permanently 86th everywhere I go. I'm just asking you for some consideration, and that maybe it was mentioned in a previous council meeting that you were considering letting me park for five days for a permit for a fee. Well, that would fit my lifestyle as long as you didn't make it, you know, $30 a day. I have a fixed income, and it's an adequate income. I could live in shelter or live in an apartment, maybe even buy a house, but I just turned 70, and I would just like to live independently. I'm bipolar. I'm not manic and I'm not depressed, but let me try to live my lifestyle in peace. But please consider that and change the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Hoover.
Members of the council, mayor, I'm Jim Hoover. I'm here tonight to say thank you to our city manager and to these council firsts for holding these vacation rental dwelling update meetings. For a long time, I've been concerned about the opportunity the public has to get involved early in the process, and I hope tonight by my testimony that I can encourage people to log onto the city website and actually view the first meeting where Mr. Chandler outlined the process and also the PowerPoints on there. So if you go to Lincoln City website, go to the meetings portal. I believe that's where you find the link to this VRD meeting. So I hope by some of my testimony from that I can motivate people to become involved and give their feedback. There's also the opportunity, and I don't have the website in front of me, to give questions to a, I guess it's an email address Mr. Chandler set up. So for a number of years now, I've been asking the question, what's the problem with VRDs? In fact, I ask it to the point that I violated one of my political science classes, which it says, "I'm not supposed to irritate you guys to the point you won't listen to me the next time I come up and speak." And I think I asked, "What's the problem with VRDs?" about 20 times that night, but I still haven't heard the answer. Without answering the question, "What's the problem with VRDs?", you have a really hard time answering. The next question is, how does this proposal that's being presented to the public solve a problem if you haven't identified the problem? You know, it's just one of those common sense things that business does when it looks at how to solve problems. So I attended this meeting, and a number of the things I found very curious was that one of the areas that's being considered is to allow VRDs in an R1-5 zone. And for those people watching on TV or used counselors that don't know, that's a lot, it's a residential lot with a 5,000 square foot minimum lot size. We actually have lots that are less than that in the city of Lincoln City, but if you're going to develop a lot in an R1-5 zone, it has to have at least 5,000 square feet. And there's a width and a depth you have to require too also. But the same proposal that's being presented, and I think the next one's on the 29th, which is tomorrow night, says that while it's allowed in an R1-5 zone, as long as you only own one per person, in an R1-75 zone, it's not allowed, and that if you had a house and tried to turn it into a VRD, you'd only be allowed 30 days. So I, you know, really quickly went to the website, wanted to find out if there was something that I missed as a builder, because my recollection was that the only difference between an R1-5 zone and an R1-75 zone was 2,500 square feet and a little difference in the lot size as far as the minimum width and the minimum depth. And so far, I haven't found that there's a difference between an R1-5 and an R1-75, which begs the question again, if this ordinance solves some problem, which nobody will identify, in an R1-5 zone, doesn't it also solve the problem in an R1-75 zone where the lots are a little bigger and where they're a little wider and they're a little deeper? And if it doesn't solve the problem in the R1-75 zone, how does it solve the problem, whatever this problem is, in an R1-5 zone? And I find myself in a curious position because, on one hand, I understand the business aspects of this and the property rights aspects, but on the other hand, I understand and have clients and friends who feel that there might be something wrong with a VRD in their neighborhood. And Mr. Chandler, when I asked him at the meeting, you know, "What problem does this solve?", he made the answer, "Well, it depends on who you ask." And I would say that if the city council is proposing changing zoning such that it affects a person's property value or what they can do with their piece of property in an R1 zone, that we should be able to answer the question, what the problem is that we're solving. Mr. Chandler said, you know, "It depends on who you ask," and I'm still looking for that answer. So the next thing I looked at is I said, you know, "Does this limit VRDs?" Well, in this R1-5 zone, we're proposing a cap on VRDs at some number which isn't noted. But some of the interesting things that I hope people will attend this meeting and go on and look at is the makeup of where these VRDs are. This is kind of a divide and conquer process possibly, because Mr. Chandler, in rough terms, identified that 40% of the VRDs are in Rhodes End, and this doesn't address any of Rhodes End. So we just took 40% of the VRD people and said, "Well, you're really not part of this discussion, because for a couple of years, this may not affect you." And 50% of the VRDs would be allowed in this R1 zone, but only 10% of the VRDs fall into this category of R1-75 and a couple of other zones that are lumped in there also, where they'd be limited to 30 days or it'd be limited to 30 days if they ever sold their property, because while they're grandfathered in right now, it affects their ability to sell their property and use it for the same use. So what it looks to me like is, we've just minimized the financial impact on the city of Lincoln City by reducing the transient room tax you guys would collect and therefore be able to spend in a budget on parks or police or those things, and we've kept 90% and 10% of the people are getting screwed, to put it mildly. So I would encourage people to go on the website. I encourage them to come to the, it looks like, Oregon Coast Community College on the 29th and in the council chambers here on the 30th, both at 6:00 PM. Become involved. This has big ramifications whether you're for or against VRDs.
Thank you.
Once again, what is the problem to solve?
Appreciate it. Ron, 6:00 PM? 6:00 PM. 6:00 PM tomorrow night. Okay, good. I'm sorry, Mr. Shipp's? Um, Jim, in case I didn't say, thank you for applying to Budget Committee, or Planning. I appreciate your efforts.
Mayor, council members, good to see you again. It's been a couple of months, and so far, it's been a productive couple of months in the marijuana industry here in Lincoln City.
And I know I introduced you, but if you could give your name.
I'm sorry, my name's Christopher Shipp's. I'm the owner of Lincoln City Collective, which is down in Taft, Southwest 50th, 1266. I was...
Do you want to speak in?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if this was the time for me to speak, or yes, I'd rather...
Yeah, it'd be best during the public hearing time, yeah, if you don't mind.
No, not at all.
Okay, yeah, we'll save your testimony for then.
Okay, sounds good.
Cool, thank you, Susan.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah. Don't go anywhere, though. Don't leave the room. All right. Anyone else who didn't sign up like to speak? Okay, thank you. All right, then we're going to roll straight into public hearings. Finalized formation of the Northeast 19th Street Sewer Reimbursement District. We have a request to continue this public hearing to April 11th, 2016. Do we just need an okie do from the council? Any objection? We need a motion.
A motion would be appropriate. You might want to ask if there's anybody, because I know it was noticed.
Oh, thank you.
The letters didn't go out, but I know it was in the paper.
Anyone here to speak on the formation of 19th Street Sewer Reimbursement District? Is that a yes on these? No? Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, then I'll get some for motion.
I would make a motion to honor the request and continue this public hearing to April 11th, 2016.
Second it.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. All right, public hearing to receive public comment on city-initiated legislative amendments regarding flashing signs, initiation of code and plan amendments, administrative adjustments to yard setbacks, and alternatives for infrastructure requirements of the D River and head debate trail, planning file ZOA 2016-01. Is that what I read now? Am I reading this part now or after Richard's done?
You have a script.
Okay, here we go. Settle and get comfortable, folks. All right, it's now 6:21 PM. The public hearing for file ZOA 2016-01 is now open. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend the Lincoln City zoning ordinance. This group of miscellaneous amendments includes decreasing the interval of time change for electronic signs from one hour to one minute, allow the planning director to initiate amendments to the zoning ordinance, comprehensive plan zoning and plan map, allow the planning director to grant minor adjustments to required yard setbacks, and requiring right-of-way dedication for walkways along the D River and continuation of the head debate trail. The planning commission held a public hearing on this matter on March 1st and forwarded several recommendations as outlined in staff's council communication. The city council's role in this legislative process is to consider any written or oral testimony as well as any information from staff and make a final decision as to ordinance amendments or new ordinances. The city council may adopt the planning commission recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may take other action, including declining to make any ordinance revisions. The council must take a few minutes to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare conflict of interest in this matter? Hearing none. Substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. A brochure outlining these procedures is at the entrance to the council chambers. The staff will present a report and respond to any questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If council members have questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance, which we have here. Please speak directly in the microphone, begin by stating your name only. And if you have written testimony to submit into record, please provide a copy to our recorder. Will the staff please present its report?
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. This first hearing is about four proposed changes to the zoning ordinance, two procedural, two substantive. When we first put it before the planning commission, it was all-in-one ordinance, because they're all relatively minor things, but actually what you have before you now is four separate ordinances to make it easier to separate them, when to deal with each of the subjects. The first is to deal with flashing signs. Right now, our ordinance says that flashing signs or changing image signs can't change more than once every hour, once every 60 minutes. The proposed amendment would change it to once every 60 seconds. The reason this is being brought forward is there had been a couple of businesses that had asked to be able to have clocks on their changing image sign. And this sign that's up here now is this, the changing image part is one that says Vitamin World on there, the LED signs. And these types of signs are becoming more and more prevalent. So what we're talking about is changing from once per hour to once per minute. So as I said, it was originally proposed to deal with clocks, but one important thing is you can't say you can do it for clocks. If you can do it for clocks, you can do it for anything. So there have been concerns expressed by members of the public about having multiple signs, all changing, and you end up with, you know, just things bouncing all around. You can see several of them, several change at once or change continuously. And the concern is that that can be distracting for drivers, and actually, I mentioned at the planning commission that when people are exposed to changing things like that, that actually induces taking riskier behavior. And I guess at staff level, in addition to these concerns, I mean, we really question the need, whether there is a need for something like this, since, I mean, everybody's got a clock in their pocket or on their wrist, and almost all cars have a clock on them now and so on. I think there was a time when businesses like banks or watch repair businesses, you know, had a clock out front, because that was a public service. And again, I question whether there's a significant need for this. We did get one comment from the public being opposed to the change, and the planning commission voted to recommend that you not make the change. So that's the first area, first of four areas. Second is on initiation of zoning ordinance amendments. Current law, the proposed changes can come from the city council, from the planning commission, from a property owner, or from a Lincoln City resident, and they can, you can initiate them or people can request that they be initiated. The proposal would add a fifth option, and that would allow the planning and community development director to initiate zoning ordinance amendments, text amendments, as well as map amendments, just to make it explicit that that is allowed. It still would require public notice of any changes and then also hearings at the, public hearings at the planning commission and city council. So the process would not be significantly different, it's just that one more option on how they could initiate it. And the planning commission recommended that this be adopted, 6 to nothing vote.
Mr. Townsend, I had a question about that. We had an email this afternoon that there was an extra word in the suggested text.
Yeah, and we'll, you're not going to be adopting, even if you want to adopt that, you're not going to be adopting that ordinance tonight, and we will bring it back with that correction.
Okay. Well, I was wondering what the reasoning for that correction was.
It was, it was the word "and".
Is this an extra word in there?
That didn't fit in the end of the sentence. It made it an awkward sentence, so we removed the word "and".
Well, I...
It may be principally grammatical.
I feel that if the app, it says, "The director shall not grant such relief unless the applicant demonstrates that." And then there's three conditions, and I think all three should be applicable, and that would require an "and".
Now, if you look on its H, item number H4, it states, "An administrative adjustment is a discretionary decision and that the planning commission director may make as a director's decision." This sentence really should say, "An administrative adjustment is a discretionary decision that the planning commission..."
Okay, wrong "and", excuse me. Okay. The end of the first line, not the end of the sentence. Got it. Thank you.
Turning to the third one, that's the administrative adjustments, and this would allow the planning community development director to make minor adjustments to required setbacks. They would, as the ordinance is written, the draft ordinance is written, it would allow a change of up to 12 inches or 15% of the required setback, whichever is less. The, it would not be allowed in advance of construction. No, there was someone couldn't come in with a set of plans that showed a violation of the setbacks and say, you know, "The planning director, you've got authority to change this, I ask you to change it." That's not the purpose of these things. Again, it's to be minor, and it must correct or avoid a non-compliance where through basically no fault of the property owner, the developer, a problem was discovered, maybe a surveyor's error or something that needed to be corrected, for instance, due to elevation required by floodplain regulations, where in Rhodes End, setbacks are a function of the building's height in a three-to-one ratio. So if a building is 21 feet, it's got to have a certain amount of setback. And so if floodplain is discovered, it's going to have to raise it up a little bit, more than originally was planned and approved and actually what was started, then they end up with a setback violation. So to address that kind of situation, there's a criterion in the proposed ordinance that says the change to the setback, the adjustment, can't be materially detrimental to the purposes of the zone. That is the same criterion as one of the four that are required for a variance. So I was just saying, basically, that the planning director has a power to make some changes, but if the change is going to actually cause a problem, then can't make that change. The planning commission, by a 6 to nothing vote, recommended that there be an additional criterion, and that is that you have to have exhausted all reasonable alternatives, so that the only thing left is to make the adjustment. Then it would be a discretionary decision of the planning director, which would be appealable to the planning commission and from the planning commission up to the city council. The planning commission, by a five-to-one vote, recommended that there be no fee for an appeal from the planning director's decision to the planning commission. Assuming that, basically, you set fees by resolution, and we haven't proposed any fees or anything, but the recommendation is that there be no fee. If there's something that makes the...
Quick question. Does it, does the appellate process cost the city any money?
Yes. Right now, all appeals cost the city money, because the fee that is set is $150 for the first two issues and $50 for each additional issue. The intent of that is to recoup some costs, but make it low enough, make the fee low enough that it doesn't bar people from, who seriously want to appeal, to appeal. They have to put a little something into it, but it still isn't totally unaffordable for appeals. So, yeah, I mean, it takes substantially more staff time to deal with an appeal than what is covered by the cost of an appeal fee already. At that $150 level, at zero, of course, it would be, we wouldn't recoup that $150. If the planning director is not comfortable making a decision for whatever reason, it also would have the power to refer to the planning commission for a decision. And it wouldn't be a full-blown variance hearing. It would be a hearing, but it would be over the criterion that would be set here. It's inadvertent, it's discovered after the fact, it's not materially detrimental, and if you want, then it'd be that additional one of exhausted all reasonable alternatives. That would then be the planning commission's decision.
Mr. Townsend? Over here. Without this proposed ordinance, the, if there's a dispute, they can still go to the planning commission to have it resolved, correct?
They can request a variance.
Right.
Yeah. But a lot of these situations wouldn't qualify for variances, for criteria. There's something unusual about the property, which can be a tough one, can't be your own fault, and, you know, like if you just want a bigger house, it's not materially detrimental and so on. So a variance is relatively hard to get, intentionally so, under state law, it's supposed to be hard to get. This is sort of administrative sort of safety valve for some inadvertent situations that we're not foreseeing and are minor.
Townsend, one more thing, sorry, I don't mean to bug you. It just seems to me that if there's no fee, you're almost encouraging them to go forward with something that's going to cost the city money. I mean, why wouldn't you appeal it automatically if you can do it for free?
That's pretty much the reasoning for why we have the $150 fee for an appeal, where you just have, you have to put something in on the appeal situation that we have now. So it's not just, you know, you don't have to pay any money, but you can take your chances. And let's see, so I said you can refer to the planning commission for a hearing, or they can, would be allowed to seek a variance, even if the planning director turned down the request for an administrative adjustment, they still could seek a variance at the planning commission. See, the final one is about...
Mr. Townsend, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Didn't they also suggest that we cut the 12-inch to six?
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you for reminding me of that. The planning commission also recommended that the amount of adjustment allowed, rather than being a foot, it'd be six inches, rather than 15%, it'd be seven and a half percent. So the recommendation was to cut the discretion in half. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Could I ask your opinion on that?
Pardon me?
May I ask your opinion on that?
Well, it reduces the usefulness to some extent, but it's still something, so it's...
Were they concerned that you wouldn't make a proper decision or future planning directors?
Well, that, yeah, that it might not be a proper decision, and I think that by limiting the discretion, you limit the chances of a bad decision.
Right, but then the alternative to not allowing you to do these things is then you have to tear out what you've done and start all over?
Right.
Yeah. That makes no sense whatsoever.
Uh, or, you know, maybe look at a variance or something. The county, uh, does allow the planning director in its jurisdiction to, to make minor adjustments with criteria similar to this, and with the same thing. If, if, if they think it's something more than routine significance, to just refer it up to the planning commission.
And since it can't be at the beginning of the construction project, it has to be unforeseeable, it has to be no fault of their own. And I, I'm just trying to figure what's the downside to this, and I don't see one to allowing you to make these decisions.
The, the main concern is, is like, for a, for a, a single-story house, the setback, side yard setback is five feet. This could allow it to cut down to four feet, um, for whatever reason. And, uh, you know, just, it's a, well, it wouldn't be four feet, actually, because that's more than 15 percent. It'd be, I guess, nine, cut off nine inches. But it just brings it a little bit closer, a little more crowding, somewhat more fire danger, whatever, so. You know, like I said, six inches or seven and a half percent.
That would be up to you, then, to say, "No, that's just getting too close, and, and no, we can't do it." And you still have that discretion. This is presuming that you're gonna make bad decisions, or the planning director of the future is gonna make bad decisions as to the safety of the people involved. And I just, I-
Try not to-
We hired the wrong person if we did that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. The last area is, is about the D River walkway and, um, uh, the route of the Head to Bay Trail. Um, what this is about is, in the, uh, along the D River, um, it, it, the way this is, the way it's worded is, this would only affect properties east of the highway. There's the highway running north and south, and here's the river in blue here. Um, it only affects properties east of the highway that are zoned and used for commercial property. The existing zoning ordinance says that when you wanna develop a piece of property, you have to put in a five-foot wide sidewalk adjacent to the street, curb gutter sidewalk, and half-street improvements. Um, the proposal is, along the D River, rather than on the street side, have it on the riverside. Five feet along the river, and plus an easement for an additional five feet, so that the city could put in an additional five feet of sidewalk. The idea is that over time, we'd be able to have a, a walkway along the river, and hopefully ultimately have a, a pedestrian bridge across connecting it. Um, actually, very, very few properties would be affected by this. The, the one on the north side is urban renewal property. On the south side, I can actually show you on the photo, there's a motel, and then there, here's the, the lagoon, and then the Union 50, a lot of property that's being, uh, being renovated right now. Beyond that, there is property zone commercial. Again, you see this sort of red triangle. That's commercial zoning, but it's, it's developed with residential dwellings, so they would not be affected by this. So we're talking about the city's property, or the urban renewal agency's property, and then these properties just along the, the south side of the river. And the, the hope is that we'd be able to get a grant to put a pedestrian bridge across, so then we'd be able to have a way to get, um, from either side across, and then, uh, under the highway and out to the beach. And just have, it'd be a, an amenity, pedestrian amenity. Um, you can see in this photo, the, this is, this, uh, sort of slightly Z-shaped line. That's the boardwalk in the state park going through the wetland, uh, and then, uh, hopefully that, that could connect. We have a city's own, city-owned open space here, and we can put a pathway through if we want, so we could ultimately, it could be a connection, uh, through there, all the way along from the state park out to the beach through there.
Richard, if I could ask, where does Devil's Lake begin? It's the same thing we have to have the board in on.
That's been a question that Dennis has been trying to answer for a long time.
Okay. Um, I guess my question is just if we have to involve the, the water improvement district in this, in these discussions?
Uh, well, you could say, you might say it begins at the dam, which is, you know, like, right there, very close to the river, uh, or very close to the highway, I mean. So, um-
Would they have any jurisdiction in this at all, or?
Um, they certainly probably should, should have some say in, in anything that goes across it. Uh, and, uh, anything on the land side is, is either public or privately owned. None of it's owned by the, by the water improvement district. The bed of the lake is owned by the Department of State Lands. Um, also, you know, you could, you might think, like, right here where this V is in the property lines, it could be, also be like, that's, if you think that's where the, the lake starts too, because that's where state ownership starts. Um, there'd only be in commercial zones, have to put five-foot sidewalks next to the street, and would wanna have the five feet set up on the street side, have it on the riverside, and then with an easement for another five feet, so the city could install. So you have to end up, you end up with a 10-foot wide walkway. Similar thing for the Head to Bay Trail in the, in the north end of the city. Uh, this is an old map, but it shows the, the planned route for the Head to Bay Trail, um, beginning up here in the villages of Cascadehead property. The, uh, black line coming down here is, is the part that exists now, as, that was put in as part of the villages of Cascadehead. Uh, and it goes across the highway as we go down. Uh, actually, this red part's, south of the highway has, they should be black, because it's been shown, uh, it's been built all the way down to, uh, 22nd and up to, up to Surf, up by the, by the schools. So it exists through here. Um, then there's a, a gap in another existing portion alongside Port Avenue in city-owned, uh, open space, um, down to the state park here, that's the plan, and then south, um, down, uh, through, possibly through the open space here, and down through the city open space, uh, uh, behind, behind the high school, and down into, into Celestia Park. Um, the city's been pretty opportunistic in, uh, developing the trails, built a lot with, uh, parks' SDCs as, as opportunities have presented themselves. The, um, proposal for the Head to Bay Trail area in commercial zones, and very little of this is in commercial zones, by the way, would be, uh, instead of the, the current law, which says you have to put in a five-foot sidewalk adjacent to streets, you have to install the five-foot sidewalk on the root of the trail, and need an additional five feet for the city to put in, uh, another five feet, so you get the 10-foot width there. And in residential zones, where the current law is you have to put in a five-foot sidewalk, uh, the proposal is that you would put in a 10-foot wide sidewalk, and it, it could be half in the public right-of-way and half, uh, in the, on private property. Right now, if there isn't room in the, in the, uh, for the five feet in the public right-of-way, you put it on, on your, on privately-owned property. This would just say you put in the 10-foot width. And then you'd get a credit against the parks' system development charges for the, that you'd be charged, uh, to offset the cost of the additional five-foot width of sidewalk. So you have to, you have to pay for your five feet no matter what. The additional five feet, you know, comes off the, uh, parks' SDCs. Yeah, this is an example of, of actually the existing trail in the villages of Cascadehead property. Um, and I think that's only eight feet wide there. The, uh, planning commission recommended, uh, by a vote of four to two, to approve the D River, uh, walkway, uh, and, uh, also by four to two vote to, um, uh, approve the, uh, the two-trail proposals, infrastructure requirements for areas by all, adjacent to the trail areas. Um, they did say for six to nothing to allow credit for the additional five feet in the residential zone, to get that credit off the SDCs. So, yeah, I think that's, that's what I have on those four subjects.
If I might ask a question, then, going back to the, uh, the D River. We're going to say you don't have to put in the sidewalks-
On the street side.
-on the street side, but it's a gravel street right now. But when we come to develop that, if that gets paved and we want it to look nice, who's gonna pick up the cost of the sidewalks, then?
It would, assuming, well, the idea is that the sidewalk exists, but it, it will exist on the riverside rather than on the street side.
I understand that, but we'll never develop that, then, sidewalks on the frontage?
If, if there's a, a need for the sidewalk along the street in addition, then, then it would fall on the city to install the, as this is written, so that it would, uh, the idea is to, is to minimize additional expense, so-
Right, I understand. I just, I, and I like the proposal, I do, but I just, I also like sidewalks.
Yeah.
I would hate to not do them simply because now the city would have to pick up the tab. That's all.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm, I'm a little confused, I guess. For the residential requirement, are these developed residential, or is this-
It should be, all be for new development.
Only for new development?
Right.
So what about the old development? So you have a 10-foot segment here, but nothing here?
Yeah, the idea is eventually, at some point, we're gonna, we will fill in, uh, as opportunities present themselves, as money is available, as we build up, for instance, the parks' SDCs, then we can go in and put in a new segment or something. The expectation isn't that the Head to Bay Trail will be finished anytime soon, but we have a goal of, you know, almost eight or nine-mile-long trail from one end of the city to the other.
And what, what I was concerned about also is, there's the five-foot sidewalk, which is on the owner's side of the right-of-way line, correct?
Right.
And then you're asking for an additional five feet, so that would be 10 feet, correct?
In, uh, residential zones, chances are, uh, that the, the extra five feet, there's enough room in our right-of-way. Almost everywhere our right-of-ways are wide enough to have two lanes of traffic, parking, and, and sidewalks.
I'm, I, I was thinking along Port Avenue, um, there isn't.
Oh, like with Port, at least we'll-
All right, that's a narrow street to begin with, and not a lot of right-of-way on either side, without cutting off homes.
A lot of times, the question is, if you look, well, if you look at, at the paved road of it, or the developed road, even if it's a gravel road, that's not a very good indication of the width of the right-of-way. And, uh, I'd like, in, in my neighborhood, we, there's a 60-foot right-of-way, but if the, uh, the road is, isn't even 25 feet wide, and people have been putting in all kinds of things, you know, up to the street because they think they own the rest of it, but they don't, so, um-
I was-
There, there will be situations probably where it's, where it's narrow and, and, uh, you know, I-
I, I was looking at more the, the utility poles where they, where they're located, for instance, on, on ORE, or, uh, uh, yeah, on ORE.
Yeah. You could end up with a telephone pole in the middle of-
In, in the middle of a sidewalk, which we have too many of those throughout town as it is. So, that's why I was kinda curious, because we're, we're, that's quite a, quite a width, uh, five feet is, uh, and some of those homes I, I know in that area are built really up close to what I perceive is where the right-of-way is. Um, so, anyway, just concerned about that.
So, Mr. Ryan, would you be then, I guess, because I like the idea of having some flexibility in this, if there was a way around that, to be in favor of some discretion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, in, in the new development areas, that's fine. I don't have a problem with, with five feet. I'm a little concerned about taking an additional, when you say you, there's another five feet that they could take, and you're saying, "Well, we can probably, that probably can be worked into the right-of-way," but somewhere down the line, a different planning director, or, you know, whatever, will say, "No, that's all on that side." And, and I'm just concerned, you know, I mean, that's, that would give you then 10 feet of somebody's-
Yeah, and that can be made explicit, that, that-
Yeah. And that's what, that, that's the way, that's what was my concern. Plus, there are some areas that I don't think, I was thinking, "Oh, my gosh, are we doing this in, in already, um, built-up areas?" Because that would be, that could be very onus, onus on, on some people.
Sure, yeah. And people have already developed a property, they've, they've presumably paid whatever they, you know, their fair share is, and put in the sidewalk or whatever, or else there's a deferred improvement agreement or something, so.
Okay, okay.
Well, I guess the question I had still was, if we run into those instances where it would put a telephone pole in the middle of it, does this allow you discretion to say, "Okay, we're gonna modify that a little bit"?
Well, one thing to remember is, is, well, except for infill, but for, for new development, utilities have to be underground anyway.
Yeah.
So like a new subdivision of it all, everything would have to be underground. And for infill, um, the telephone pole question is a significant one, and, um, we'll need to figure out how to address that.
Well, and that's why, you know, I, I don't mind the plan, just I want that discretion there-
Right.
-so that we can work around it without having a giant hearing on top of it. That's all I have. I guess that's it.
So that's all I have for, uh, staff report, and, uh, happy to answer any questions.
I've got a couple of comments. Our planning and zoning laws are pretty much black and white, I think. I'm getting now back onto that discretion issue on, on offset, like, the 12-inch, 6-inch, whatever, offset. Uh, I have some problems with discretion when it comes to black and white zoning laws and, 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 uh, planning laws. And I can see a situation where a planning director, not you, but a planning, um, director in the future, looking at that, say, "Well, I like contractor A and B, but I don't like contractor C." So in my discretion, I will grant A and B what they want within C because he's a sloppy contractor. I won't allow that. And I, I don't think that's right. I think when the law is black and white, this is where the house has to go, or the building has to go, and if they infringe, then my feeling is, fix it. I just, I just have a real problem with discretion because I think that, that lends, that leads itself to other problems in the future. That's just my comment.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm thinking back to that issue we just had with, uh, the apartment, or, it was Joe Barnes, where the, the survey was wrong, and it was a four-inch difference, I believe we talked about. Am I thinking the right one?
Right.
And as we discussed, that you need that flexibility to say, "Okay, there was a mistake made. It wasn't his fault. It wasn't the beginning of the project," and that's what you've laid out pretty clearly. You don't have that much discretion. It's at the very end that says, "Okay, it's not his fault. He didn't start at the beginning. It couldn't have been foreseen," and, but we don't want the development to not happen, and we don't wanna keep making people pay, because for those of us who built things in this town, the money's still going out. We're writing checks every day. Doesn't matter whether the city says it's okay or not, we're still writing a check for that property. And, and that's where I'm in favor of having some discretion, where you could say, "Okay, I, I get what happened, but I do understand Counselor Sprague's concern," because that was mine, "But once you've laid this out, I'm pretty okay with what you've said." This is my two cents.
I have another comment on another section of that, on the, on the signs. Is it possible to just reduce the, uh, ability to go to, um, one, one minute or whatever that, I guess it was, uh, reduce it from one hour to one minute? Uh, just the clocks, only digital clocks?
No, if, if we allow it for anything, we have to allow it for everything. We can't base it on the content. So we can't say that, that something that changes every minute, if it's a clock, it's okay, but if it's an ad, it's not.
Seems to me that we oughta be able to differentiate between the two, because it's the, it's, it's the fact that they're reading all of this input on the ads that go on there every minute, and it, that would be a distraction. But to glance at it and see that it's 10:42, uh, that's, that's here and now done. And I, I can't count the, the cities that I've been in, where you drive down their main street and you see signs out there on banks or whatever they are, and it flashes the, the, uh- the, uh, time once a minute. It seems like, uh, we should be able to differentiate.
But, uh, under state law, we can't.
Really?
Yeah. You know, Oregon's got very broad protections for speech and, uh, um, making a content-based distinction, saying, we like this message, but not that message, we like time, but not, uh, how much it costs to buy a soda, uh, we, we can't make that kind of distinction.
I think that's dumb.
Mr. Townsend, regarding your authority to increase something by six inches or 12 inches, we're not saying that if you didn't have the authority, those adjustments still could be made, it would just go through the planning commission in the form of a variance, wouldn't it?
Well, not necessarily. There, uh, like you said, a variance is hard to get, and, uh, one of the criteria in there is that it's, it's basically, it's not your fault, and another is that it's an unusual piece of property. Well, you could have just a standard 50 by 100 foot lot, and through, uh, let's say a surveyor's error, I mean, the argument can be made, the surveyor's error is basically your own fault, uh, in, in that, uh, you know, there was nothing preventing it from being done right, and you just, just have to blow where the, where the setback is required to be. They, um, you don't necessarily, you couldn't necessarily, uh, get a variance, uh, if, if the planning director didn't have that discretion. And that's one of the reasons why we're proposing this, because if it's, if it's a minor change, um, chances are, chances are variance isn't going to work, but a minor change, you know, yeah, different criteria, and it's, it's, uh, relatively small impact, so, uh, the, the impact versus the, the cost of having to correct the problem, uh, would, is, the, the scales way pretty, pretty well for, in a lot of situations, for just being able to say, you know, you can, you can make a little minor adjustment here. I mean, we've had, there was, there have been situations, there was one in Rhodes End where the, uh, builder, who was a commercial builder, uh, was basically, this is before it was in the city, basically ignored the setbacks and actually had to take three feet off the side of the house. Um, and a, a situation more recently where it was in the city, um, it were just miscalculated by, uh, probably about nine inches. Uh, the house has been sitting there almost a year unfinished because we're exploring different ways to correct the problem, and, uh, ultimately a way has been found, and I was just going through an administrative process as far as it means adjusting the lot line between this building and the house next to it, and they had to tear the, tear stairwell off the adjacent house so there'd be enough setback for that, uh, to be able to move the property line a foot, and, uh, so it's, it's, there could be substantial expense and problems with it.
So this would remedy those, those examples?
Well, certainly would have remedied the second one. The first one, uh, where it was so egregious, um, it would not have, and, uh, if I'd been planning director, I would have decision, I would have made the same decision that the planning director made in the county, was that, you know, fix it, you know, take the three feet off the house. It wasn't even close, it wasn't, it was just, you know, just did what he wanted to do, didn't bother to check setbacks, and it was in the wrong place.
Well, you know how things kind of drift, you know, have a tendency, you know, is, if you, you do this in all good spirits, in trying to make it economical and, and time-sensitive to remedy a problem, and then things drift. I mean, instead of 12 inches being the exception becomes, well, we can always get those extra 12 inches if we need them, you know? And, and I'm not saying that's true in this circumstances, but I've seen a lot over time, you know, where you're begging for forgiveness all the time, and, uh.
Yeah, and, uh, one thing, you got, you sort of have to rely on the planning director to, to stand his ground, that way, like there's, uh, when this was being proposed, I had someone come into, come in to me and say, well, so that I wouldn't have to meet the, the setback, you could cut a foot off of it, and I could put in a bigger building. And I said, no, that's the point, it's after the fact.
Mayor?
Yes?
Also, I have a concern about the fact that we're using the term minor, that's pretty, uh, subjective. What's the difference between minor and major when it comes to that?
Well, it's, it's a discretionary decision, and if a person didn't like what the planning director said was minor, and think it's major, they could take that to the planning commission.
Might be major to the property next door.
Right, exactly, exactly, yeah.
Question, you, please go ahead.
Um, Mr. Townsend, is, I, I didn't see in the draft ordinance or proposed, a, a, some kind of a, a reporting mechanism, um, back to council or public, uh, you know, maybe on an annual basis, tracking these kind of adjustments? Um, and I'm wondering if, if something like that shouldn't or couldn't be incorporated? The reason I, I say that is, as we know, um, the town has a tendency to, you know, get a little bit of information and rumors go ballistic, and not always correct. And so it'd be a way of, uh, at least council, being aware of adjustments you've made from ordinances or the, the planning director making them. Um, so I'm, I'm trying to think of some kind of way that there could be some kind of accountability, and then a, a Counselor Sprague can monitor for himself, you know, whether that was a minor, or it starts, you know, for Councilman Ward, you know, morphing into something else, um, if there's trends appearing. Just, just a thought.
Yeah, I was, provision can be put in, requiring an annual or whatever, uh, report. Um, and, and that's fine, it's just, you know, it's, it's, somebody's got to keep track of that, but, uh, you know, it can be done. I, I don't, I don't foresee this being used often at all. I mean, I was always thinking about, in the years that I've been here, how many times would it have been helpful, four or five times total, in 16 years?
And I, you know, I guess, Mayor, that's what I think of as a variance, you know, and I, and I would agree with you, having, you know, read that or into, I think variances are impossible to get. And maybe that's the ordinance we should be working on, rather than amending something else, so that, so that a variance, you know, is at least plausible. Right, right now, I, I would agree with you, I don't think they are. Um, and maybe that's the mistake we're, we're making here, um, because you're, you're talking about some similarities, um, you know, out of their own, you know, realm, not, not their own mistake, you know, and, and trying to make some adjustments there.
Yeah, I'd have to look and see how much discretion the state lets us have on variances, and, because virtually every community, every jurisdiction has this, essentially the same language as we do for variances, and it may well be that the state does not give us the flexibility to, to say, to lower the threshold for variance.
Once again, that state sure gets in our way, don't they?
Maybe, I don't know, maybe there's a way to fix that.
I think so.
I think so. I'm beginning to think municipalities have to have a little more power. Thank you.
This was paid for and approved by, please.
Can we see the slide again, um, that shows the head debate trail? Thanks.
This is the southern end, and we also have the northern end. I don't know what you want.
Yeah, the northern end. Thank you.
Okay. Everyone else done?
Because that's the area we're, we're talking about for the five-foot versus 10-foot?
Yes, now, um, I can see that this part up north of the black line, we own that property, so that would happen when, when and if that's developed. Um, there's a gap in here, but all this down here, up to here, it exists now, it shouldn't be red, it should be black.
Okay.
And, uh, so we're talking about this area and then coming down through, I guess you get down towards the, the, the river a little bit, and it, you know, it could conceivably be on the boardwalk in the, in the state park or something, as I say, it, it, we're trying to find opportunistic opportunities, I guess, to, to where this can be put in at, uh, at minimal expense for, for anybody involved. In the southern part, um, where it's shown here, this is all, uh, city-owned open space. This is all city-owned open space down here, there's a gap in here, uh, in this area just south of 23rd Street, uh, that's actually not even in the city yet, and then, um, down in, in the Taft area. It may be, uh, what we're looking at with the, the Nelscott Gap Plan is actually, instead of having it go this far east, having it come along, uh, the highway, is the possibility.
You need it? Oh, okay.
In the gap plan, they were talking about it actually going over into Agnes Creek south, and then coming across the highway and, and using that. So where did they decide to go across the highway to the west side?
What was the first part of what you said, I'm sorry?
Well, the, the plan that they were looking at was taking the trail and crossing 101 there about 23rd, or, or north of 23rd somewhere.
I think there was a, sort of a side trail going across there and going into the, uh, Agnes Creek open space.
Right, right. But then they were concerning how to get back across 101, I was trying to figure out why they, they even discussed that when the, the trail that you're showing there is totally way east of the gap plan.
Yeah, as I say, we sort of grab opportunities when they come along, and, uh, it, it's, you know, it may be possible that rather than coming that far east, maybe it's a good idea to, to somehow come up through Agnes Creek and then across or something. So it, it's more of a corridor idea at this point, and just if we can figure out a way to extend it, then it's great. There is a lot of, uh, open space in, in this alignment here, it makes it, uh, much easier to put in.
Before we, we, oops, before we close this up, I'd just like to echo, uh, Counselor, um, that, uh, Dick, that approaching the idea on seeing if the variance is really the, the root of the problem, I think. I, I agree with, with Dick pretty much on that. I think he hit the nail right on the head.
Okay, and then back to the, the changing of the signs. You had mentioned something that I've never heard before, induces taking riskier behavior.
I happened to, I was reading, uh, some things about, um, flashing signs, and there was actually a, a study that was done, you know, genuine scientists from a, from a reputable institution, I forget what, what it was, but it was, it wasn't, uh, uh, somebody with a sort of a predisposition automatically going into it, you know, it wasn't an organization that was for or against something, it was an academic institution. And they had done some study, done a study on, uh, if there's flashing things going on in the room, and how people gambled, and without flashing lights, they did, they, they were inclined to take significantly lower risks than when there were flashing lights.
Wow, that's a stretch.
Well.
From, from a casino to a highway. That's just me.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, as it builds up, you know, conceivably you get to a point where.
Yeah, but we don't allow.
These signs are getting so prevalent that, uh, you know, you get more and more, and the price goes down, and also people, uh, if your competitor has them, you feel you need to have it, pretty soon they're, they're, they're the standard, and then if they can change every minute, then you have things going all over town that are changing.
Um, you know, and I, I'm concerned, I brought this up before, when we talk about distractions and, and making these the bad guy, um, there's a lot of other things in this town I could think of that are bigger distractions that we don't even talk about, being, one being the Sunday market. Um, I can't think of a bigger distraction in the city than that, when, when all that activity is going on on that front lawn, that every car stops and watches as they drive by at, at an intersection, and I, I just don't think it's a fair application to say, these are more distracting, because I, I look up and go, oh, it's 10:30, as opposed to pulling my phone out of my pocket to say, hey, oh, it's 10:30.
Well, I'm not going to disagree with you, but we're not talking about 10:30, we're talking about something that changes, illuminated signs that change. And not to, not to, not to beat on casinos, but you know, if you're heading out of Highway 18, heading east, and there's that big casino sign, I mean, where does your eye go when you're, when you're still probably three quarters of a mile away from it? It goes right, my eye goes right to the sign, and it's, it can be, I believe it's a full video sign, I'm not sure.
And I look at the guy that does the carvings too, I always stop and look at, I drive by and look at those too, to see if he has any new ones. They don't flash though, but I look at them, and then I look at the, the, the little restaurant over there, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm not buying that we're so malleable that any, you know, flashing light's going to drive us to distraction beyond our cellphones and, and conversation, McDonald's dinners and our laps.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying this is the biggest problem, we're just saying it's a problem.
I know, as a business owner, I, I, I understand what they're saying, you know, it's just ridiculous to invest the money in a sign at the mall and have it sit there all day with one message.
Well, they can change it every hour.
Well, okay. Not enough, in my mind.
Mr. Mayor, you also don't, you don't want your town looking like downtown Reno, I mean, we have a certain ambiance and flashing lights and signs every, you know, 100 yards is, I think it's distracting, and I, I also think it's an eyesore, so.
Well, I guess I'll, I'll kind of piggyback on Counselor Sprague's, you know, taking exception of the word minor, I'll, I'll take exception of the word flashing. Um, nothing's flashing, they're changing, but there's no, none of this, no one's going to go into a, you know, a seizure because of, you know, we've learned that the price of hot dogs went down one minute versus another. Again, just my opinion, I just, I just don't see it as a big problem, uh, and I think we need to do everything we can to support the businesses in this town. And I don't, I can't think of too many businesses in this town that have multiple signs where we're gonna, you know, we're gonna be just bungarded with these lights.
If, if it's like, like the, the mall has two, but in, but if it's on the same property, they have to be 100 feet apart at least, but they can be every 50 feet if, you know, if they're, you know, different owners, um, so.
That's what I'm saying, we get to that point, then we change it. But I'd say, this is my opinion, I'm, I'm again, I'm, I like the changes, I like the idea of the change, that's just, so, I'm a grown-up, I drive safely.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Townsend, Ed, um, I'm always wondering how some of this stuff comes before planning commission or council, and if I'm correct, someone, a business owner, wanted to put a, a clock in or, or some kind of a, a time that was, and so you're honoring their request, is that, and that's, that's kind of normal? Um, other businesses or residents have, uh, stuff that they run by you and you screen it and send it on?
Um, sometimes, you know, actually in this case, uh, they ran it by you.
Yeah, that was the.
Yeah, I remember that.
New one.
We're honoring that.
Okay.
And I think there was a consensus that, yeah, we need to.
Should, should at least look at it.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I, I would be far more concerned about animated signs. Those, I think, are highly distracting.
Exactly.
Um, once a minute is, I, I think, uh.
That's the right word.
That's, that's not, I don't think that's as, as distracting to me as banners flopping in the wind, or spin disease, uh, near the kite shop, which.
Or the guy dancing on the corner.
Yeah, you know, I, so, so the, the minute-by-minute change, to me, is not as difficult. Um, if, if we were talking about animating the sign, using wipes and, and, you know, and building the, the picture and so on and so forth, uh, once a minute, then I would, I would be screaming, heavens no. no, because that is extremely distracting. But change, a static change every minute is not, I don't find that to be as distracting as in, you know, anything else that goes on. Anyway, that's just my thought. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll take my shot. I saw her here. You know.
I don't know how far you want to go into deliberations before you take testimony.
I'll make this short. You know, you can compare them against things that are already semi-distracting and say, well, it's not as bad as that. Is that the criteria that you would really want to go, to measure against, to something that's already a negative, that's not as negative as something that is a negative? I just, I think we can do better than that. And I, and I think that they're far less attractive than, and distracting than a sign that perhaps is, is, you know, made of wood and has, you know, an attractive smaller sign that is static. For a long time, we started to move towards that as far as signing goes, and we've gone away from that now again. And I just think it reflects on how the tourists and how we feel about our own community. Part of it is how we sign. And signs say a lot. They say a lot about the building and the business and back of those signs. So that's it for me.
All right. We'll save that for later. All right. Anyone else? No? Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. There's a lot of good information. Let's see, is there, let's see, we're going to go from the testimony sheet here. Nope, that's the next one. We didn't get to the marijuana one yet. Right? Okay. Now's the time for public comment and testimony. We have no one signed up to speak on the subject. I thought you were on F for the marijuana. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. Oh, is F2, I see. I'm sorry. Got it.
Very carefully saying Mayor Williams, and I'm actually counsel. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Jim Hoover. I own property in Lincoln City. First, in my kindest, softest voice, I'd like to object to the process that this is going through tonight, because if we can put four ordinance changes in one public hearing and hear planning director talk about four things and then have to come up in our three minutes and comment all four, then we can put 12, we can put 16, or we can put three or two. And so I see no reason other than Mr. Townsend has to walk the distance from his chair up to the front to have, you know, this all in once as opposed to four different ones. I'm not even sure I can use my full three minutes for all three, because I tracked the first one, and then we started off on a totally unrelated subject, and I tried to track on the second subject and still put my thoughts together based on his comments from a public comment. And we went to a third one, and then we went to a fourth one. So while I would like to see you reschedule this public hearing and actually have four public hearings on the four ordinances independently, so people watching and people giving public comment and you as counselors can actually hear them and digest them one at a time, I will make a few comments right now and hope that you replan this. The first one, I think, we talked about was this discretionary decision of the planning director with regards to setbacks. And I'm always interested, things are just kind of slipped by, because we talked about the six or 12 inches, but there was a 15% of a setback that was greater than five feet, I think it is, which is really a three-foot discretionary adjustment by the planning director to a front yard setback. And so in that case, we're talking about a very large setback, not just six or 12 inches. And while I agree that there are situations like surveyors that, in spite of the best efforts by a contractor or homeowner to hire a licensed individual to do a survey, and then they rely upon that survey, there's areas of Lincoln City, mostly around the D-Lake section, where depending on which surveyor you hire, there can be as much as a three-foot discrepancy between the survey, depending on whether you come from the south end of the D-Lake area or whether you come from the north end of the D-Lake area. And a surveyor just has the requirement that they're supposed to be able to show how they came to their decision. They don't have to defend their decision against somebody else's decision. So if they use a data point on the north end and survey a property, and somebody else uses a data point in the south end and surveys a property, it's right by both standards for the surveyor. And I don't think that we really want to hold property owners to this. You have to now judge whether or not your surveyor needs to be held to some other standard. So I believe there's a need for this type of process, but I like the variance process because I, too, am concerned about whether my public comments in this facility or on TV or in the paper might, not with our current planning director, because nobody would, you know, imply that, but with a future planning director, might embellish his discretionary process on whether or not I'm granted that same or somebody else has granted that same process. So I think the variance process allows it, or a variance process up to a certain point allows it, because I know that there's a lot of people who are discouraged from building the Lincoln City because of the discretionary process that exists right now.
Since we're talking about four items, you're going to take a.
So I'll leave that one as the first one. The second one we talked about, I think, is this D River area. And I'm just, I sat back there and tried to come up with another word other than sloppy because sloppy just sounds really bad and tends to point fingers. But it sounds to me like we're having a public hearing where we noticed people, but it's a public hearing based on noticing people, where we don't know where the trail is actually going to be, because the trail could change from further to the east or further to the west, or it could be changed to a different part. And so how do we notice property owners that they might have to have an additional easement taken off their property if we don't have a definitive place where this trail's going to go? And if I was a property owner anywhere in Lincoln City, I'd say, well, you know, the city council or the planning commissioner, the planning director or the planner might decide they want to take the trail through my commercial piece of property. And right now, it's not shown that way, so I wasn't noticed. And like I said, I was trying to search for a word other than sloppy, but I just, I can't believe that we're having an ordinance, a public hearing on something. And then I started thinking, well, you know, as a contractor, if I tried to develop next to the D River, you know, along that section that he showed there between the D River going up by the old Union 50 Club, boy, I mean, my hands would be spanked so fast, you know, you can't develop within there. But I guess if you're the city and you want to develop that, you know, that's really different. And there is a big difference, because one of the things that wasn't mentioned in the testimony was, there's a little trigger in there other than if your property's undeveloped. And while this isn't in an ordinance form, at least what I can see on the website, which is another objection, because I couldn't see the proposed ordinance that we're having this public hearing on, I saw the testimony of the planning commission, but it says a 50% value, which is typically the trigger, at which point you have to abide by the new zoning. And so you could have a building on this ever-moving trail that isn't really defined, that if you improved it to more than 50% of its value, or you repaired it due to a fire or earthquake or tsunami or water damage, or, you know, anything that might be caused by you or not caused by you, you would then be forced to grant this easement along the backside or the front side of your property that's in addition to what you presently have, and it might make your building unbuildable. And the consequence is, is if your building isn't buildable, then the insurance company only has to pay 60% of the value of that, of the loss, because it can't be rebuilt. And that's to keep people from burning buildings down that are non-conforming and collecting money. So once again, I keep saying the word sloppy, but I just don't know how to convey it any more strongly than that. The third item that I heard started to be mentioned is these flashing signs. And I was intrigued, did I get my three minutes starting over, Kathy?
Well, you're at my discretion, so move along.
The, Mr. Townsend finally made reference to something I've been talking about for a number of years. And he said, and I think I got his words exactly as he said it, he said, sign contact, the sign content based on the, the actual, what's on the sign cannot be regulated. And for a number of years, I've been pointing out, the city sign ordinance says that you have to have your political sign taken down so many days after a political election, it can only be up so many days before a political election. And this all came down from the Supreme Court on a case called Galio versus Ledoux, where he said, you know, a content of a sign is a form of free speech, and that there's no substitute, in fact, it says right in the Supreme Court decision, for a colonel to be able to put an anti-war sign on his property, that there's no substitute for that. And yet, we have this whole sign ordinance that's been sitting around for years and years that says, you can't have your political sign up, but you can have your real estate sign up. You can't have your political sign up, but you can have your commercial sign up. And so we need to address this whole sign issue, and it shouldn't just be parted out because we have, you know, an issue that I think is a valid issue to look at with regards to clocks or how often signs flash. We need to look at this whole sign ordinance and really dig it back in. Because really what that means is that, right now, you have a five square feet for a contractor, but you have a 20 square foot for a realtor, and you have 45 square feet for somebody else. And if you can't, as Mr. Townsend correctly said, regulate a sign by content, then you can't say the contractor and the realtor and the political sign or the commercial sign don't have different content, because that's the only thing that makes them different, is that there's something different there. So there's that whole issue of signs, and I believe as we go down that road. The second item related to that is, is that, you know, the unintended consequences of what happens in these chambers is that you guys make decisions and then people go out and invest money in signs, whether it's Barnacle Bills or somebody else. And then three or four months later or after an election, we get another majority of four people on the city council, and they decide something else. And it'd be great if the person could get their money refunded for the sign they just put up and then put up the proper sign that's now allowed. And so this back and forth with signs and this discretion and this lack of a real vision for the city of Lincoln City has implications, not only, as Mr. Ward correctly pointed out, in the image of the whole city, but in how people invest their money and the continuity.
Move along there, Jim.
Okay. So anyway, those are three issues. Once again, I'd like to ask that you reopen this into four separate items, the same way the marijuana issue's coming as a separate item, so that we have comment on all four items. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And yes, for anyone else who wanted to speak, we'll be as generous to. Anyone else want to speak on this? Didn't sign up? Nope? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. I guess that is the problem of lumping things together. We need to look at a time limit in that. Any comments from representatives of public agencies? If there's no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record? So move.
Second.
A motion to second, any discussion? I have a discussion. If I want to, and I guess I need to turn to Mr. Appicello on this, if, if we wanted to change this to four separate hearings, will closing the record nullify that?
What you have is a properly advertised and noticed ordinance, proposed ordinance, that had four separate sections in it. Because the planning commission recommended no on one of them, the flashing sign thing, and recommended yes with some changes on the second one, and so they have differing recommendations. It would be, well, we can sit here and delete section one and renumber it, or we can create four separate ordinances. So just for purposes of being able to move forward, four ordinances were created. You're not required to have four separate hearings. This has been properly noticed, measure 56 notice, notices in the paper. Now, if the motion to close the hearing and the record, we'll close the hearing and the record on all four. So if you want to entertain either a continuance of the hearing or you want to leave the record open for public comment, written comment, you can do that. That's not what the motion is, and that's not what the second is. But if you wanted to start again, remember, this was sent, letter notice to DLCD, measure 56 notice, and as well as the regular city ordinance procedure for planning amendments, they wouldn't have to redo all that, redo all the notices. And you're saying we would do that because four separate sections were included in one ordinance? But they were noticed.
Right.
And there, I looked at the packet here, and that all four ordinances, draft ordinances, are on the electronic packet.
Right. I'm not questioning that. I just wanted to know procedurally, basically, if we close this now, that's, we're not going to talk about that.
If the motion passes, then we wouldn't be continuing any public hearing. You wouldn't be taking any additional comment. If you want to provide for additional comment, then I'd recommend you leave the record open for written submissions and not take action today.
Please.
Is the only difference between four hearings and one hearing would be the length of time that the public had commented?
Yeah, I imagine that if we have four separate hearings, each, you can get up and speak your three minutes on each one of the legislative amendments. So with the fact that the mayor provided for additional time, I don't see any prejudice.
Yeah, I think that's something we need to discuss if we're ever going to do this again, that we need to modify that, because that only seems right. Put four things out there, we can't say, oh, you have your three seconds, three minutes here.
Well, is it the desire of the council that we leave the public hearing open for additional written comment?
Yes.
I would agree with that.
Mr. Mayor. I'll rephrase my motion.
Before you.
We're still in the discussion.
I'm sorry.
I don't agree with it. I agree with Mr. Hoover that, in fact, I much prefer each ordinance standing on its own, four separate ordinances. And trying to put four into one motion or into one ordinance, I think is potentially damaging from the standpoint that if we don't like one of those, do we throw out the entire ordinance, or do we just eliminate that? How do we do that?
Your honor, can I answer?
Please.
That's essentially, the hearing before the planning commission had one ordinance with all four items in it. After the planning commission and given the differing recommendations on each one of the pieces, I wrote four ordinances. So that's why you have four ordinances in your packet. You're not being asked to act on them tonight. Tonight is only the public hearing. So you're having public testimony on four sections of what was advertised as one ordinance. I only divided them afterward to facilitate you going forward and having, taking action.
So I guess then the question would be, if we keep it up just for written testimony, I mean, we're doing four things, was it actually enough time for people to make arrangements to come in and speak or to get stuff in? Given some of the things that were brought up, and there's some pretty complicated issues, honestly, within these, and I do think we should minimum keep it open for a written and possibly even, but I guess we can still do the ordinance separately, right?
I would prefer that. Just throw everything out and start over, actually. I know that's costly and everything else, but I think from the standpoint of doing it right, I think that we should take each one stand alone.
Your honor, within that, so that was what you said, though, is we're just going to move it forward and we will still have that opportunity to consider them separately.
Yes. At this point, we have one advertised public hearing, and you've had the opportunity for public comment. If you feel that, as you said, there wasn't enough time for people to come and comment, then you can help to fix that by not continuing the public hearing, but leaving the record open for written comments.
Right. So then if we do that, then it comes back, even when the time expires, then we'll still have time to consider each one individually as a council. We won't be asked to move en masse on these.
Aren't we locked into the fact that it's all four or in one ordinance, based on the public hearing?
There are four.
There are four ordinances.
So we will be able to pull them apart. But I agree, I don't think I'd like to see this in the future.
No, I agree.
Yeah. Okay. So you were going to amend your.
So I would amend my motion to close the public hearing and leave the public, leave the record open for written comment for a period of 10 days? Is that too long, too short?
Your next meeting is the 11th, so.
So 10 days would be, would that be sufficient? So that's what I'll do. Leave it.
I'll amend my second and agree with that.
So we have a motion to second to close the public hearing but leave open the record for written submission until April 11th, right?
Correct.
5:00 PM?
Actually, no, the next meeting is April 11th.
No, for 10 days.
Okay. Give me a date.
I don't know.
10 days from today.
Don't you need it by Wednesday for packets? Oh.
April 6.
Jackson, what day would that would be?
6th, April 6th.
Okay. Leave the record open until April 6th at 5:00 PM.
Okay, until April 6th, 5:00 PM. Okay. So a motion to second, any further discussion on that? I guess all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Do we, this is the first, do we need to change, is this a majority vote on this? Okay. All right. The motion carries. Good job. Wait a minute. I like that. All right.
So that would end the script for this matter, and you would pick up at the next meeting where you left off here.
Okay. All right. So that's that, correct? We're done with that piece of paper. And we are back to, yeah, does anyone need a five before we launch into the next? Anyone need to get up and, okay, good. All right. Public hearing to receive public comment on city-initiated legislative amendments regarding locational and operational requirements for retail marijuana stores, planning file ZOA It is now 7:38 PM. The public hearing for file ZOA 201602 is now open. The public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend the Lincoln City zoning ordinances, or ordinance. ordinances, or ordinance. These proposed amendments, if approved, will amend various sections of the zoning ordinance to specify locational and operational standards for retail marijuana stores. This includes both recreational and medical stores. The planning commission held a public hearing on this matter on March 1st and forwarded a recommendation as outlined in staff's council communication. The city council's role in this legislative process is to consider any written or oral testimony as well as information from staff and make a final decision as to ordinance amendments or new ordinances. The city council may adopt the planning commission recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may take other action, including declining to make any ordinance revisions. The council must take a few minutes to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare a conflict of interest in this matter? The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I'd like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. A brochure outlining these procedures is at the entrance to the council chambers. The staff will present a report and respond to any questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If council members have questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the signup list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff please present its report?
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. Presently, under the city ordinance and actually under state law, medical marijuana dispensaries are required to be at least 1,000 feet away from schools and at least 1,000 feet away from each other. When the initiative was passed allowing recreational marijuana, it included a provision saying that recreational marijuana stores had to be at least 1,000 feet away from schools, but it was silent on distances between them, so presumably there was, so as, under state law, there's no requirement. So what this amendment would do is, is for our Lincoln City zoning purposes, it would treat medical marijuana and recreational marijuana the same in terms of locational criteria, 1,000 feet from schools and 1,000 feet from each other. As I said, under state law, there's no requirement that recreational marijuana be 1,000 feet from each other. The reason that we brought it forward at all is because recreational marijuana sales will shortly be legal. People are investing or thinking about investing in developing a recreational marijuana sales business, and if you want to take action, now's the time to do it, otherwise the horse will be out of the bar. And right now, actually, state law is a little bit, it's in a little bit of flux on what ultimately will happen in terms of whether the same store under state law could sell recreational and medical, or could be in separate suites, you know, like right next to each other with separate entrances or something, so that they have to be separated. So, again, what I'm, why we brought it forward is because the time to act is now. If you want to do it, I'm not saying that it's a major issue or anything, but would hate to have a situation where people are investing and then find out when it's legal to have the business that actually, their investment is, was for naught because we have a state or a city code requirement. So I want to get it out as early as possible so that people can make appropriate decisions if that's necessary. It's really sort of your, your decision on what, what route you want to go. The way that the draft amendment is written, it would, as I said, treat, by definition, it would create a marijuana sales facility, and both recreational and medical would fall under that definition, and then it have the, the recreation will be subject to exactly what the medical is subject to now. And it would be allowed as, as medical are now, be allowed in most commercial zones, but not in the RC zone and also in the Taff Village Core, only within 100 feet of Highway As I said, I'm not, not putting this out as a, as something that is of, you know, burning concern, but just that if action's going to be taken, now's the time to do it. There's a split on, you know, on things, so.
Couple of questions. Number one, state manages or controls liquor, and we have only two dispensaries in Lincoln City.
Two liquor stores.
That's what I'm talking about. Liquor dispensaries.
Okay.
We have four medical marijuana locations.
We have more.
Thought we only had four.
Have five with the six coming along.
Don't yell up, we can't hear you, it's on record. Don't worry about it.
Okay. Well, when we initially set this thing up, it looked as though we were only going to be able to have four, based on the distances to churches and distances to each other, that sort of thing. I guess my concern is that if we open the thing up wide open, that we'll just end up with shop after shop. And the other question is, there's, there's one that's just now apparently going in at 14th, West Devils, like Road 14th there across the street on the corner. Is that operational now, or is that just coming in and?
I don't think it's open yet, but I think it's a dispensary and not a, I'm not sure, I haven't looked at it closely, but I don't believe it's open yet. But, you know, on your idea of proliferation, that's, that is one concern that, that there would be so many of them, and by having a thousand foot, you have fewer of them. There have been places where you end up with several stores aggregated together. In large cities, you end up, occasionally you have basically a marijuana zone.
The recreation is, it's under the OLCC control. Have they issued any guidelines as far as density? Because I know they have density limitations for liquor outlets.
That's right.
No, they haven't. Right now, you know, places that sell liquor, I mean, we have the two liquor stores, but then there was, as far as I know, there's anything that would prohibit more liquor stores, and of course, you know, there's supermarkets sell beer and wine, and of course, then there's Mars that sell liquor by the drink and so on.
And then, just refresh, because it's been a while since I was paying attention. There was a discussion about whether both could be in the same building or not. Has, has that been resolved?
Yeah, there was a.
What do we have on that?
There's a new state law that was just passed, Cent Bill 1511, that allows medical patients to buy recreational product at recreational stores tax-free.
Remember that.
But it is not clear whether, what would happen if you wanted to have both in the same store or in adjacent suites where you don't.
Right, well, because that would make a big difference in my decision. If you can do both in the same, we don't have to change anything. But if you can't, then we got.
Well, if you could do both in the same, it still wouldn't mean you could do one, it still wouldn't mean that you couldn't do one, you couldn't do recreational wherever you wanted, essentially in a commercial zone. There's, you know, there's the fear of proliferation, but then there's, you know, market usually takes care of when there's too many of them, because some will go out of business. It's, I think there are people who think it's an easy business to get into and easy way to make money, and it's not that easy to have under, under the state system. It's just not, it's not a simple thing, you're going to rent a store and start selling marijuana. So it comes down to what you, what your concerns are. Proliferation is a concern, if, if having a whole bunch of them in a small area is a concern, or if you think it's better to just let the market decide, that's, you know, it's just where you want to come down.
With the 1,000-foot figure, has a study been done to determine the possibility of how many outlets there could be in Lincoln City?
Well, we looked at 1,000 feet from, from schools, and then I think we put in where the, where the, I think where the first four were, and it, it closed off most of the city for any additional ones. There still were some areas where there could be liberation. I don't have the, I don't have the map in front of me.
Then one, one other question. Has it been determined that the medical marijuana outlets cannot or can sell recreationally?
I don't know. I don't know.
I thought I read somewhere where it was going to be possible. I don't know if that's ever happened.
I think it's possible for recreational to sell medical, and probably some of the people here, like who are in the business, can understand it better than I can.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Mr. Townsend, other than zoning, you know, and I'm, I'm trying to think, can you give us some examples or where municipality regulates quantity? And even the form of quantity is 1,000 square feet from one thing or another, schools, children, restrooms. Is there anything that, we do coffee shops, we live it, or taverns, hotels?
I don't know in Oregon of anything, I can think of something with three initials that I was asked not to mention, with the first initial being B, that do have, some places do have spacing requirements.
Okay.
Or a numerical cap, but as far as, you know, like retail businesses.
So do taverns have some kind of requirement as far as proximity to schools? Do they have something similar as we've imposed on the medical marijuana?
I know that they do.
Oh, okay.
It's something, because we just, for the city, we treat them as just as any other retail store.
Right, right.
OLCC regulates them, and if they meet OLCC standards, then we're good with them as long as they're in a suitable zone.
Right.
But we don't say they've got to be 1,000 feet from a school or something like that.
So we're already more restrictive with the medical marijuana?
Right.
Okay.
Well, all right. Thank you. And now's the time for public comment and testimony. And we have Mr. Shipp. It's your turn. Hello again, welcome back, and we'll get the lights up, I guess.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Christopher Shipp. I am the owner and PRF of Lincoln City Collective, which is in Taft, 1266 South, Southwest 50th Street. Sorry, I'm a little tired, excuse me. I've called for, I've come up to talk to you for a few reasons. One is, it's been great since we've last talked, been able to hire three people in our business, and, you know, we've been successful. I don't see really any problems. The community has been very open to everything that we're doing, all the judgments that you've made, and so far, it's been a good result. Again, I don't see any negatives behind it. I went to breakfast this morning at a local place, and the waitress came up to me, and she's like, oh, I've been seeing you a while, good to see you, and great to see you too. And the second thing out of her mouth was, so there are two more dispensaries in town, how many more are coming? And I said, whoa, wow, this is kind of crazy. So we're actually going to have a conversation about this later today with the city council. So it seems as though, I said, are you concerned? She's like, well, you know, just like, how many is too many? How many is enough? She's like, is there going to be one on every corner? Are we going to be known as Pot Town USA? I said, I don't know, that's not my decision to make. I said, there's council members that are going to make that decision, we're going to talk about it later today. I said, you know, in a fair market, as you guys said, it's, you know, up to the discretion of owners to be able to keep up their business against the competition in the marketplace. But again, this isn't like a real competition-based business, as there's so many rules and regulations set up, as you guys just mentioned, to actually have this dispensary. You have to go through hoops. It's not like opening up, you know, other retail operations where it's just a license, a quick license or whatnot. So I don't know the answer, and I'm just here to offer any information that you guys might need. I know you have a bunch of questions on what the rules and regulations are and how they're sitting right now. I go to the senate meetings, I've actually spoken to senate also, told them about, you know, our little chasm that we have here on Lincoln City and all the different rules and regulations, and gone through it with them. So I have a good understanding of what is going on in the state. And that's the question you have to ask yourself, do you want to be known as Pot Town USA? Because right now, per capita, I think it's around 10,000 annual people that are here, and so we have seven dispensaries currently in Lincoln City, and 68% are, over 67% of population voted yes. So if you look at the actual people that said yes to marijuana in the town, you have about 60, 70%, seven dispensaries, you're looking about a dispensary per 1,000 people that live here. Is that enough? Is that too much? I don't know, that's for you guys to decide, but that's what's out there.
If I may interrupt, the question is, will we allow recreational within 1,000 feet?
Well, that would, yes.
And so your thoughts are yes?
Well, I don't know what to say to that, because I'm, I mean, I'm a business owner, I could say, no, I don't want any other businesses in town, but you know, under the fair market, you know, want other businesses and kind of solidify the market. But personally, can the town handle it? You know, looking at the demographics of the town, how many people? Are we setting up for, like someone else mentioned on the council, businesses to come in and shut down? Every couple of years, you'll have a business come in, they try to do it, they open up, the sign goes up, maybe it's a digital sign, maybe it's not a digital sign, then it shuts down, some other owner comes in, they change the, you know, is this what we're setting ourselves up for? I don't know. You know, there is no answer to this. This is all new, and you guys, as we said last time, you have the power to deem this just sitting here right now. But again, these businesses have to go out, and people that are going to invest have to go out and make a decision on where they're going to put their money. Personally, I think it's too much. Again, you're going to be known as Pot Town USA. There aren't any other cities in Oregon that have this many dispensaries per the amount of people that live here on an annual basis. You are number one in the state, so.
And this won't take away from your time, but can you give a thought as to why? What has made Lincoln City so attractive?
It's a resort town. I think that the ease of.
Well, so is seaside, so is Cannon Beach, so is Yahots.
You also have a, you know, a main road that comes in and out on 18 that brings everybody down to the coast. So people are coming through Lincoln City. I know Newport has it all, so I'm not saying that there aren't these, you know, passageways through the mountains to come out here, but I think it's more appealing because of that. Secondarily, you, you know, there are a lot of open spaces here in this, you know, when I came into the town a couple of years ago, I noticed how many retail spaces that are open. There are tons of them open. You know, there are restaurants all over the place, so it's very, it's very easy for someone to pick up a retail space and then, you know, try to make a business out of it. And I think that's attractive to a lot of people. Also do know people from out of town, now that there's no state requirements, they're looking at Lincoln City because of the amount of population that comes through in the, in the summertime, and demographics.
Can you answer that question we had about whether recreational and medical can share a same facility?
Yes, I can. At this point, they cannot.
Okay.
Cannot coexist. You would have to have, you have to give up your medical license to opt into a recreational license.
And do you foresee that being, staying that way?
I, again, you know, the senate was wishy-washy, it's kind of like they pushed it off until next session, because they didn't want to really deal with that, because it's such a sensitive issue, and they kind of let it up to each city to make the decision on what they wanted to do, and as far as they're considering, they wanted to step out as much as possible, so.
Okay.
No, I don't, at this point, I don't think there's going to be coexisting, however, because of the rules and regulations that they're putting up for medical dispensaries, they're making us follow the same rules and regulations to re-opt into medical as you would for your recreational licensing. So all the rules and regulations and any of the hoops that you have to jump through for recreational, you're going to have to do the same thing for medical. So I'm assuming that they're starting to, you know, send us in a direction that it's basically one or the other, or coexisting, because it's the same laws and rules that you have to, you know. that you have to, you know, come up with for both places.
I think later we'd have a marijuana dispensary every 500 feet then.
And I've seen this. In California, there was, I keep on saying it to my friends, there was a dispensary on a three-store, you know, strip. There's a dispensary on one side, a dispensary on the other side, and there was a fish aquarium store in between the two of them. And I started laughing, I said, this is what is going to happen in, in the industry across America, we're going to have, you know, just one thing in between the two and, you know. So I don't, again, I don't know the answers to all these, but I'm just here to say that I've seen, what I've seen and I've been able to track what's going on and it seems as though if you don't, as the planner said, if you don't set rules and regulations right now, you're going to get past that, that time that you can and there's going to be an onslaught. I already know that, speaking of how many other dispensaries could fit within the thousand, you know, foot that we already have, that we've already established between the schools, the municipalities and the dispensaries, I already know, because I've done tons of research into the area, that there are still three or four areas that would fit three or four more businesses, marijuana businesses into the, to the area. So you're looking at 10, 12 possibly that could be fitting into the, what you've laid out for coding so far to do with medical. So if you, if you don't put something forth right now, it's wide open. 12 could become 24 very easily.
And I sure don't mean to monopolize your time, but I have a lot of questions.
No, please, I'm here-
I don't know anything about this.
I'm, that's what I'm here for, as I said last time, any questions you guys have.
Okay. I know when I walk in, my background is restaurants.
Sure.
And I can walk into a restaurant and go, okay, this is going to make it. I can guess their costs and overhead, I can look at their prices and labor and I go, okay, they're not going to fly here. I don't have any of that skill in judging marijuana dispensaries. So is there anything, I don't even have to ask the question. Do you, at what point do you have to pull the plug on these things? Or is the profit margin so high that you can sit there for a while?
No, it's not. And with the taxes and, and the shifting in the industry that's happening right now, the new rules and regulations are coming out, you have to continually adopt to them and, and add things and take away things and as you said, it's always kind of changing. So the margins aren't that good. Everybody thinks that you get into marijuana, it's going to be this windfall. It's like a regular business, you know? And we are feeling the hit already, the two that just opened up, or one that reopened and one that is opening. We've already seen our numbers start to slide a little bit. Now we are in the off-season, everybody can say, oh, the windfall, the summer's coming and all the traffic and all the people and bring up the numbers, but I personally know if we continue on the same path in the wintertime that we are right now, next year, I'm going to be laying off instead of hiring like I did this past year to keep up with the business, you know, to make sure that it was-
And within that, can you give me an idea of what's the, is there a standard wage? Are you paying higher than minimum?
We're paying higher than minimum wage, yes.
I don't need to know your specific, but in general, do you know what we're looking at?
I don't know what the other places are doing, but I do know to attract the better salespeople and hires, I paid more than the minimum wage to, to people that were interested in qualifying.
And then my, this will be my last question, I promise. Is when, when someone comes into a bar or a liquor store to buy alcohol, there's certain training that goes on for these people to say, no, you're visibly intoxicated, I can't sell to you. Is there the same restrictions on your businesses?
It's, there are some restrictions that have been placed already. You have to have food handling permits and stuff like this that go along with owning a retail shop or anything that's in touch with food, but there are new security measures that are coming out. In fact, this Thursday, I'm having my whole staff trained prior to even the state coming out with the rules and regulations, saying that you need to do this. We're being proactive rather than reactive, which is I hope what you guys will do also.
About serving intoxicated people, you mean?
About the protocol behind any problems that you might have. An intoxicated person, just a person that's violent, someone that might be on drugs, someone that doesn't understand the rules, whatever that might be.
But that doesn't exist now, right, under OLCC guidelines?
There is, no, no, there are no guidelines for dealing with those people. Luckily, they are putting those into effect with the recreational laws that are coming out next year, but, or they're starting to pose, it was in a bill. But again, they haven't been inactive on, it's not going to be another six to nine months before we start to see some of that, but we're, again, we're being proactive, we're getting everybody trained to deal with that.
Sure appreciate you sticking on my question. No problem.
Anybody else?
I have a question. You're selling medical marijuana at the moment and I think it's July 1st recreational sales. But you will not be able to, to do recreational sales?
At the, at the present time, we're a medical facility that has limited recreational sales. I think that's where the nuance is.
Okay, so you have a little bit.
Yes, as of October 1st, the last time we talked and we sat here, you guys initiated the, you know, go ahead and do it, we're not going to give a vote, you know, type of thing. So that was the start of limited recreational sales, which means we can sell up to a quarter ounce of flower per person over the age of 21 with a valid government ID. They can only make one purchase per day at the store and they can't eat, take on the medibles, the edibles, the tinctures, the candies, the concentrates, they're not allowed to have any of that. What's coming up in the law in the next couple of months is they've already started to put some of these edibles, medibles, tinctures, the medical side of it into the recreational side. They're slowly going to slip it in. Again, they're afraid to set limits, they're looking for the OLCC to do this and they're, they're kind of being very timid on trying to get involved in someone's daily intake or whatnot. But right now, we're, medical was limited recreational and then come October of this year, you have to make a decision. Well, you can make a decision to opt into recreational or to stay medical.
Now, I'm going to go a step further.
Sure.
In October, let's say I have a medical marijuana card.
Mm-hmm.
But all of the places have now decided they want to go recreational, where do I go with my medical card? Or does it make any difference?
We're not sure what they're going to allow. Right now, you can walk in with your medical card, you don't pay the taxes that everybody else would pay on a recreational basis, you just get your medication and it, they deem that going forward, that the tax structure is going to stay like that. Whether or not they're going to allow me to sell medically also if I opt into recreational, it's still, and that was the only little caveat in this whole thing, is that if you do make some sort of a zoning, the only thing I could say to keep available is that the owner of that thousand-foot bubble, let's just say, has, might have an option to hold both licenses within that thousand-foot bubble. Because to be honest, I wouldn't mind having a recreational store and a medical store close proximity to each other so I can help out those patients if they don't allow me to go both. I would rather be both in the same location rather than have all these different locations and different stores and nuances, but it's not for me to say at this point.
But at this point, OLCC hasn't made up their mind whether it's going to be dual or if it's going to be singular, either, either or.
There, there isn't anything in doctrine that says that. They're still kind of wishing on that, yeah. But they have said that recreational can be next to each other, buttus to each other if, if need be. So that's about all that they've left.
But I, I tend to think deviously sometimes.
Sure.
I can see a devious person going into your store and qualifying for that, that little bit of recreational stuff, but why couldn't they go to the other six stores the same day and do the same thing and, and literally load up?
Of course, they could. And this is, this is the little, you know, gray areas in these laws that are being put out by the state, is that, yeah, there are these little nuances that someone could take advantage of it. Luckily, a quarter, quarter ounce of flower is literally this much. It's not like, you know, you're getting these huge bundles where you have a backpack, you know, around town. By the time you get to the sixth story, you know, it's kind of like you put it all together and you have a little, you know. So it's, it's to, for the reselling factor, to someone to abuse the system, yeah, obviously, you know, people go in with fake IDs at 18 years old and get into bars and, you know, they abuse the system that way also. So of course, there's going to be, you try to limit as much as possible, it's government-issued IDs, you know, all this whole nine yards and you do warn the customer that they're only allowed to, you know, purchase at your store for the day, but again, you know, leaving it up to the person. I'm like you, as you said, I like to have the line drawn in the sand with the laws stated so that we know exactly which side that we're on.
I kind of look at this whole process that we're going through as the end of prohibition. Very similar.
It's very interesting being part of this and the fact that you guys can just deem anything at, you know, a moment's notice is just revolutionary if you ask me. It's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. I was going to make a joke that you might have been the only guy that was there, so. Sorry, Roger, you left yourself wide open.
That was a low blow.
I apologize publicly. All right. Is there anyone in the audience who did not sign up but wishes to speak? Please, go forward. Just give us your name and go right ahead. Once you get to the mic. Okay. Sorry about that.
My name is Timothy McNichol and I just kind of wanted to touch base on a couple comments that you made and address a couple other small points. I do believe that the initial restrictions were put in for a certain reason, so it kind of makes sense to adopt them on the recreational path as well. With regards to, I know that you, you may be getting a feel, trying to get a feel if both aspects of the population or, or the customer base will have their needs met by the two different types of licenses out there. And the way that it's moving now, it seems that most, it would make sense that most stores would opt towards going recreationally if needing to make the choice between medical and recreational because there's obviously more, most likely more profit to be made with that, with that part of the population. So there would be more of a need to regulate how many recreational businesses were available in an area than there would in medical. You mentioned the restaurant business, I was, I managed restaurants for a long time, so is it the, certainly your ability to survive would be based on the product that you offer, the atmosphere that you offer just like a restaurant and maybe service to a degree, but I think that what you'll find in this business is going to be, especially with now the ability of, initially you had to be a two-year resident of the state in order to get a license, they changed that fact so anybody can come in and now get these licenses. So initially, I think that it was Oregon residents that were bringing their money together and opening these businesses with the hopes of having a successful business. I think at this point, it may come down to who has the fattest pockets to just come in, open up a shop and compete against locals that have done their best and offer a great product, but once facing this extreme amount of competition, may not have fat enough pockets to list in the long run. I think that that's a concern. Right now, you have kind of a group of community stores with a lot of locals involved and I think that you would see a quick change in that if it was open to anybody and less restriction based on, on where you could open a recreational store. I do think that it's, it's a foregone conclusion that the six or seven stores that you have now would translate into the 12 to 14 that could, could possibly exit, take up, take up place in, in the town.
Any questions? No? Thank you so much, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor Williams, did we get his name?
Yes, we sure did. It was Timothy McNichol.
All right, thank you.
Yes. All right. Is there any comment from representatives of public agencies? Seeing none. If there's no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
So close, so move.
Second.
A motion of second to close the public hearing and the record. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing none, move, motion carries. What is the pleasure of the council?
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I, I, I really do like the thousand-foot, the prohibition of a thousand feet at least in between these stores. And I think that we need to do it, however we can do that, that an existing medical store, if the state so deems, could have a second store, that is a recreational store, within that bubble, that, that would be in close proximity to them. And I think that's, if the state suddenly decides that that's the way it has to be, I would hate to see them have to make that decision to, to either go one way or the other one. I, I would like to see them have that option. That's just for the ones that are existing as medical dispensaries now. The thousand feet, I don't have a problem with that. Yes, we will probably end up with more, but we have a huge population come summer and certainly Oregon is like Colorado and Washington State now. It's becoming a place where people know that they can come and buy recreational marijuana and, and that's, whether we like it or not, that's going to be an attraction to this state. And so we are in that kind of a community. I think with the thousand-foot restriction though, we will limit the amount of, of stores just from that standpoint. And all the other restrictions that we had in place, I think we should say they're a thousand feet away from schools and whatever. So anyway, but I would like a provision and therefore the existing medical stores that if they, if state regulation allows and they want to, they could open a retail store within that bubble of their own. That's my feeling. Does that make sense?
Within their existing footprint?
Yeah, well, well, within their, I mean, it may not, they may not be able to be a recreational facility, have a recreational facility right there. The, the state law may say it has to be a hundred, at least 100 feet away or 200 feet away. So that's why I was saying, within their bubble.
Yes. I, I don't know how you would word that, so.
Yeah, if, if that's a direction, at this point, it's a suggestion, but if that's a direction the council wants to go, I think that we need to tweak the definition used in the ordinance, which is the retail marijuana store definition. Because that's currently defined as medical dispensary or retail recreational marijuana store. And if in fact, you're combining them, retail marijuana stores, it's one of those, but now you've added a third, which is kind of like a combination suite kind of combination. So we can try to guess what the state's going to do or anticipate it, or we can wait until they do it and then react. So it's up to you, but I think that, you'd be addressing it in the definition section, I believe.
I, I can see what Council Ryan's asking and, you know, it, it makes sense for the planning portion of this, for someone who wants to open a business. They go, okay, at least they're, they're thinking of it and they're going to allow it if it happens. And I think there's some comfort in that for a businessperson. And then again, making it happen within this ordinance might be problematic.
If I may, a question. The ordinance does, I noticed that you struck medical and so that it, it says retail marijuana sales or whatever. Yeah, okay. So does this ordinance only go to them or does this, does this ordinance, talks about both?
This ordinance defines both as retail marijuana stores. So instead of it calling out medical and then calling out recreational, it just says retail marijuana stores and that includes medical and recreational. So one word defines both uses. And, and that's why the thousand-foot is being applied because thousand-foot was already in the ordinance and so thousand-foot applies to the new definition.
And I understand that. But if we, if we're saying that, okay, so retail marijuana stores, thousand feet, okay, but the state comes along and says, yes, you can have a recreational store and you can still have a medical store, so then this, this person could have a recreational store, but it would have to be over a thousand feet away from his medical store?
And that's why, and that's why I suggested that instead of the definition having medical or recreational, it would have a third one that says combined facility authorized by the state.
Okay. So that would be included in what I would suggest. Okay, that's what I was trying to find.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I agree with Wes on, on the thousand feet, but I would prefer that we don't include the bubble that he's talking about in this ordinance now, that if later on the state does allow this, then that we can tweak the ordinance or amend the ordinance at that time to, to make that change. I just, I'm not comfortable with just opening the door wide open right now. I think I'd rather follow what the state does.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor? I'm, I'm for mimicking the medical and just have that same restrictions for retail. I'm not in favor of spacing shops. We don't do that for any other product, and I can't believe you business people, or so to speak, business people, would so regulate. Let the marketplace, these people are risking their own capital. They're venturing into a, you know, for some, a new product line, for many, an age-old product line. And it's good for the consumer for a reduction of costs if they wanna compete, because my fear is the next thing we're going to do, and I did approach, is, you know, when Dutch Brothers came to town, you know, Starbucks is angry because we allowed another coffee shop. Well, heck, there's 98 places you can buy coffee in this town. So, you know, when do we as a government, you know, stop and start regulating? And I'm a firm believer in the marketplace, the consumer will decide. I think you're letting your own personal feelings about what was once an illegal product enter into the discussion. It's a legal product today that the voters of Oregon voted on, and you should so honor it. These entrepreneurs are coming to Lincoln City, coming to Oregon, because we did that, and there's a business opportunity. And if you do something in your thousand-foot, then you're giving a monopoly to those people who, you know, have their square footage today. They've latched onto space and, you know, we might as well start thinking about taxi medallions for marijuana stores, you know, where you can only have it here and it, you know, make some money off it. But I'm not for it all, so I think for me, it's enough restriction for the imposing what we did for the medical and just let it stay at that.
I just kinda have some notes. At least for the, our hotel, it was marijuana has been an unexpected attraction. They'll book the whole hotel and then forty or fifty of them come in, and next thing we know, they're smoking marijuana, they found the marijuana stores, and have to educate them that you still can't smoke marijuana off the property or it's like tobacco. So, we've been surprised at the amount of tourists that actually take away, or take advantage of marijuana. My own opinion is this is, this is a lot like a gold rush. It's kinda like the VRD days, you know, when mom, pop, VRD, VCR days, when mom, pop, stores all had a video store, and we had probably twenty of them in Lincoln, or fifteen in Lincoln City. And eventually Blockbuster came in and they all got wiped out, and then Blockbuster got wiped out. It's just the nature of the Darwinian economy. I was wondering if we had, if we had thought about a cap, and I don't know if that's possible or not. I think it's common that we regulate hazardous substances such as tobacco and alcohol and marijuana and, and, you know, getting into the more regulated ones, we can say, you know, heroin, I mean, they all have degrees of accessibility. And frankly, I would prefer to see fewer stores being more profitable. I think profitable stores make better neighbors and pay better wages, and I like prosperity. This, this gold rush may or may not, I'm feeling likely may not be an asset to the town, where every third store is someone's idea that they're going to strike it rich. What will happen is no one will strike it rich. They'll all, they'll all struggle and none of them will survive. So, that's my opinion.
Anyone else?
Well, I'm gonna put in my two cents' worth. I appreciate your passion on the free market side, Dick. Comparing marijuana to a cup of coffee is a bit of a stretch for me, and the fact that I can get a cup of coffee and drink it while I'm driving down the road and I won't be affected by it to any degree, they're two different things, and I just don't see that, that we can say one's the same as the other. I'm definitely a free market guy, and I think it's okay for me to have a personal opinion, whether it's become legal or not. I still think it's okay for me to debate these things, things don't always stay legal. So, I can't just say, well, it's legal, I don't have to talk about it anymore. I do have to talk about it, because I don't agree with it in any stretch at all, by any means. Having said that, when it came before planning commission, I remember I proposed a two thou, or I voted for the two thousand-foot restriction, and one of the things that crossed my mind was to protect the people who were here already. That was what I was thinking, is how do we, how do we protect them, make them more profitable? How do we establish them so they don't, we don't have the fly-by-nights? And that's one of my biggest fears in any business in this town, is the fly-by-night. We saw, we're still feeling the effects of the pawnbroker fellow who took in everyone's stuff and then didn't pay him and the like, and I just, I wanna make sure that the people who come here survive as best as we possibly can help them survive. And it does concern me that we do get a, we cultivate an image in this town. Now, we can say, hey, it's fun, it's hip, it's cool, but you know what? I know a lot of families who won't come to that environment, and I wanna speak for them, and I wanna speak for segments of the population that still do find it offensive and who don't wanna be around it, and have to explain to their kids and things like, yeah, I get it, it's legal, okay, I don't need to be lectured on that. But it does send a message about what kind of environment are you cultivating for your town and who do you want to attract? For me, I don't think marijuana sends that message. Again, I get it's legal, but in my opinion, which I still get to have, is I would like to see less of them, and I'd like to see it more restrictive. So, if we say we're gonna allow a thousand-foot buffer, or we're gonna enforce a thousand-foot, again, we're back to a 500-foot. You're hopscotching, medical, recreational, medical, recreational. A 500-feet, I think is excessive. So, I will, I will not, I will vote to keep the restriction, because that's all that's really before me, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't want anything looser than that.
Your Honor?
Please.
Just, just for clarity, because they're both defined as the same thing, they're going to be a thousand feet away from each other. So, no recreational is gonna be closer than a thousand feet to another recreational or medical.
Okay.
So, that's what is proposed. In fact, the legislature, although we have lots of Home and Law Authority and some express statements in, by the legislature that we can impose valid time, place, and matter restrictions, they did go as far to say that we can't impose more than a 1,000-foot separation between recreational. So, we're doing, I believe, the most we could do in terms of spacing. And by, by identifying them and defining them as the same.
I appreciate that.
The medical and the recreational will be a thousand feet from each other, as well as from recreational to recreational.
And also from protected, schools, right?
And the schools, and, yeah, okay, the others.
Alright, I'm good. That's all I had to say. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, one last word.
Please.
I think it would behooves to take a look at Colorado, they're a year ahead of us now. And I think there's a PBS segment on, on that for them. And they've had some really interesting challenges that we may, ourselves in fact have, and they've come up with solutions to those challenges that we may wish to emulate. And I would, I would really suggest that staff take a look at Colorado and look at it a little closer, maybe figure out, there won't be an oceanfront town, but there'll certainly be small towns our size, and take a look and see what our challenges and our opportunities might be.
I agree, I agree. I know one of the biggest ones that came out initially was the, the youth homeless population just boomed in Colorado. And I looked to summer coming here and, you know, how many homeless kids are we gonna have here who are gonna just, you know, hang out and get high and whatever, beg on the corners, I mean, what's that gonna do? Well, that's another thing I'd like to bring up at some point if we can, when we talk about the begging on the corners, but that's for another meeting.
Just, just one last thing, is that Richard was, Mr. Townsend was correct in that, you know, what, the reason why this is before you is because land use has a process, and the law in effect at the time you apply is the law that affects, that governs your application. So, if there's an urgency to get the zoning part done, that's the urgency, get the law in place. Now, are there other valid time, place, and matter restrictions, health and safety laws we might wanna look into? Certainly. But this is zoning, and so all the processes have been followed.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
When it comes time to enact the ordinance, can we do that under, as an emergency in order to make sure we fall within that, that time?
I wouldn't recommend it, but I believe that, because I don't, I don't really think you should do land use by emergency, but if you want me to explore that, you're gonna, if you, this passes, you're gonna give direction to bring back an ordinance for adoption at the next meeting. You can do the first and second reading at the next meeting, and then it's in effect.
And that gives us time?
In thirty days.
That gets us within that, that.
Yeah, there is no state law, other than the fact that these facilities will be up and running in October, so what we're trying to do is get, get the law in place as soon as possible.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, here now. We have our motions. It's a council decision to approve any amendments and ordinance findings we'll prepare for consideration at the next meeting. Where do we have this process? We're, we're in discussion.
At this point, Your Honor, you're just looking for a motion to, we have a bring-back an ordinance or not?
Oh, there, okay.
I would move that we bring back an ordinance crafted along, well, like the one that is proposed.
Second. May, may I restate that, Mr. Ryan, please?
Yes.
I, I would suggest that you move that we adopt the proposed ordinance and direct staff to prepare findings and to bring the ordinance back to the council for first reading at the next regular city council meeting.
Hi, we have a pointed discussion.
Well, I haven't, he was revising my motion for me. Yes, that would be my motion.
Thank you.
And my second.
Alright, you have a motion in a second?
There was discussion about including a combined facility if it was recreational, medical.
I decided not to.
I decided not, okay, so this is, that's not included.
Because of the way it was written, right.
Okay.
Any other discussion? No? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing none, motion carries.
So, we'll return with an ordinance at the next meeting for first and second reading, and then if, if it's acceptable, adoption.
Yes. Yeah, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break, if that's okay with council? Okay, five minutes.
Was that Tina French?
No, it looked like it.
That was Renee.
Yeah, I think it's Renee.
Yeah, I think it's Renee.
Turn the light on. There's a lot of air for.
I'm, nature calls. Okay, are we back? You good?
No, we're missing two.
Mics are active, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, we've got a quorum.
They know the consequences. All right. Okay, so we're on to ordinances. Ordinance 2016-04, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 13, Public Services, Chapter 13.06, reimbursement district for advanced financing of public improvements, Section 13.06.055.
Mr. Mayor?
Your Honor?
Do we need to do the public hearing number four?
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. Skip, thank you.
Jump ahead, I know.
I did, thank you. My eyes are just the worst. Thank you for stopping me. Okay, we still have one public hearing left, I apologize. To receive public comment on city-initiated legislative amendments regarding new or clarified standards for multifamily development planning file ZOA 201603, we have a request to continue this public hearing to April 25th, 2016.
So move.
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, I'll repeat it again. Ordinances, ordinance 2016-04, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 13, Public Services, Chapter 13.06, reimbursement district for advanced financing of public improvements, Section 13.06055, recording the resolution to authorize notice in the city electronic lien record.
Your Honor, this is first reading of ordinance 2016-04, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 13, Public Services, Chapter 13.06, reimbursement district for advanced financing of public improvements, Section 13.06055, recording the resolution to authorize notice in the city electronic lien record. Your Honor, this is a housekeeping matter to authorize use of the electronic lien record to simply provide notice that a resolution approving a reimbursement district has been approved. Currently, the ordinance requires that we record it in the county deed records. Since the electronic lien record is referenced in the county deed records, it provides adequate notice. So what we need is a motion to approve first reading, and if it is approved unanimously, I will proceed to second reading.
I would so move to adopt the, approve ordinance 2016-04 for first reading.
Second. Motion in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, oh, I'm sorry, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Oh, I need a roll call, okay. Roll call, please.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Norikas?
Yes. Your Honor, this is second reading of ordinance 2016-04, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 13, Public Services, Chapter 13.06, reimbursement district for advanced financing of public improvements, Section 13.06055, recording the resolution to authorize notice in the city electronic lien record. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
I would so move that we had approved the second reading and adopt ordinance 2016-04.
I second it.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Norikas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Well, so much. All right, moving right along, resolutions, none. Special Order of Business, we have a presentation of water features at community center. Gail Kimberling, please. And we will be using the light system, so go ahead.
No, it's past my bed. Woo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You might recall that in the fiscal year 2015-16 budget, we, you and the Budget Committee allocated $100,000 for aquatic improvements. And we kind of narrowed it down to aquatic improvements at the existing community center. So we've been doing a little bit of brainstorming, my staff and Mr. Chandler, to come up with some options that would enhance our facility for both residents and visitors. So I thought I'd just briefly, a little bit of history about the Aquatic Center. It was constructed and opened in 1980, paid for with a bond levy and property taxes. We had our major expansion and remodel in 2005, and those were paid for with urban renewal funds. That was when we added the basketball court, the walking track, the fitness rooms. We also remodeled the locker rooms and the front lobby to the community center. In 2009, with capital outlay funds, we added a 12-person spa, the water slide, and some fountains at the small pool. And then in 2013, with the capital facility fund, we were able to replace Bessie, our aging boiler, with an energy-efficient unit. And we also replaced the hot water holding tank and the heat exchangers that heat the water for the building. And then finally, last year, again with capital facility funds, we did a lighting upgrade for the natatorium and the gymnasium, where we replaced the old halide lights that took forever to come on and use a ton of electricity with LED fixtures. In the gym, they also have motion sensors, and in the natatorium, they have light sensors. So when no one's in the gym, they go off, or when it's too bright in the pool, like today, they were hardly on at all because we used sunlight in the pool. So that's what we've done to the facility in the past 35, 40 years. In the meantime, aquatic usage has gone down, a number of reasons. Lately, schools are no longer sending kids to learn to swim. It's all a result of no child left behind, state testing, all of the demands put on teachers nowadays to read, to do math, to meet the Common Core standards. Unfortunately, they don't have time to come to the pool to swim. This year is the first year we've, don't have any Lincoln County School District students in our pool.
Sorry, Gail, is that something that's been said to you by someone from the school district?
Yes, yes. It's dwindled little by little. I can remember, I taught swim lessons at the pool in the 1980s. It was one of my first jobs as a lifeguard and swim instructor there. Every single class, elementary class in Lincoln County came for swim lessons for two weeks, and then second graders came for three weeks. While the other classes went away little by little, the second graders continued to come. And then Ocean Lake went away about four or five years ago, and tapped, second graders still came until this year, because now all second graders are at Ocean Lake School. We have some of the private schools still coming for swim lessons, but not the public schools anymore.
No, and I, I just want to, I've never heard this, so I want to make sure I'm getting it right. You're telling me that schools are not providing swim lessons simply because there's too much testing going on? It's not a financial thing?
It's not a financial thing. We provide the pool for free and ask the schools to only pay for the instructors. And for instance, a second grade program, the schools paid for instructors and transportation through grants, through the Walter Barron's Foundation. They provided money for lessons. Mainly, it's time in their day. They're trying to get so much into a child's school day that they feel like taking, you know, an hour for swim lessons, which includes transportation, and in Ocean Lake's case, walking to and from the pool, just takes too much time away from what they're required to do by the state and the federal government when it comes to teaching kids. It, it's unfortunate because, you know, we're surrounded by water here, and a big part of our lessons is teaching water safety.
Okay, but someone has to make that decision. Is that from the superintendent?
It's mainly from the individual principals at the school.
So they have that?
We saw changes when principal changes at the school. And now with new staff members coming up, the experienced staff members who used to bring their children for swim lessons have pretty much retired, and, you know, the new staff members coming up, you know, are teaching at the, you know, behest of the state and federal guidelines and their, and their principals' discretion, so. So that's when one of the big reasons that we've seen fewer kids in the school, you know, recreation swims, they come and go in popularity. We do see bumps when it's an Olympic year. Parents sign their up, sign their children up for swim lessons, especially in the summertime when the Olympic, you know, swimming events are going on. 2010, you can see, there was a big bump, and it was not an Olympic year, and I haven't been able to pinpoint why that year was busy. But we, we were up again in 2014, but we were down again last year. Interestingly, drop-ins are the majority of our pool users, and conversely, members are the majority of the users of our fitness center. For instance, last week with spring break, oops, go back, and I ran my numbers today, and during the six-day period of spring break, because we were closed on Easter Sunday, we had 1,311 people in our pools. Those were drop-ins for the six days. We were quite busy. And that was just down slightly from last year when we had 1,375 people in the pools. So spring break's still a good week for us. I usually track the weather along with my numbers, and because it was kind of rain, sun combined, we had pretty good numbers last week. Last year, we had one day where it was terribly stormy, and we had, we were really busy that day, and we didn't have quite that bad of weather this past week. I guess I didn't do my rain dance well enough, so. But you can sense, I mean, that's a good week for us. There's still interest in coming to a pool and having a good time. It's just, what can you do to keep it fresh, to keep the experience exciting for everyone?
Then if I can ask, and I'm sorry to interrupt. Since we're not teaching children to swim, how are they learning to swim to come to our pool?
We have seen more, I hate to use the term water rescues, but I would say assists in recent years. I don't have numbers in front of me, but our lifeguards have been assisting more youngsters. They jump in, they get over their head, they go down the water slide, they can't swim. They're needing more help than they used to, because they are not learning to swim, unless their parents sign them up for swim lessons, either group lessons or private lessons.
And you track when there's an involvement of the lifeguard?
Yes, yes.
So we could get those figures for you at some point?
I could, I could do those figures.
I would like to see that, please.
Okay. I'd be happy to get those together for you. So, which brings us to keeping our pool fresh and up to date for visitors, which means thinking outside, and this is pun intended, the box, because it's a rectangle box of water, which, you know, a lot of facilities are. So how do you keep it updated and fresh? There's a lot of ideas out there, but you have to take into consideration, of course, cost, weather, location, the impact on existing uses, and our biggest users are the seniors right now. So we don't want to compromise any of their programs while adding play elements or improvements for other people. Of course, there's safety considerations. You don't want to block any views from the lifeguards who are on staff or any paths. You have to, you know, really put that at the top of your list. There's space issues. You can only do so much inside of the natatorium. There's storage needs. You can have great toys, but if you're not using them all the time, where are you going to put them? And then, of course, the long-term impact. You can put in a great water slide, kids get bored. The simplest thing that we have is the rope swing. It has hung from the roof of the natatorium since the pool was opened in 1980, and that is still as popular as ever. Last week, children and adults were lined up around both sides of the pool, waiting to get on the rope swing. It's like when you give a child a new toy and they want to play with a box instead of the toy. So you don't always have to be real fancy with your ideas. So these are some of the things that we came up with. Replacing the Pelican with a new kind of fountain. The Pelican is really popular, but it only dumps water every few minutes. The beak has to fill, and then it dumps. To be honest, a lot of kids are afraid of it. They look up at that big thing, and they wait for the water to hit them, and they're afraid. So you can do a bucket's, you know, style fountain, or something that just spins water all the time, and there's other ideas out there. And to do this, you could use your existing pumps and pipe, change it out fairly easily without having to dig into the deck, which is where you run into a lot of costs. These are pretty popular. They're an aqua climbing wall. They actually slant towards the pool, so you get up to the top, and then you drop in the water. A lot of fun. The disadvantage is only one or two kids can go up at a time. It takes a while to climb, and then you drop off. Whereas in comparison, the rope swing, you get on the rope, you fall off. The next person gets on the rope, and they fall off. So this, you would wait in line a little bit longer. We have limited deck, deck space, so it would probably go where the rope swing is located now in the southeast corner of the pool. It would need to be removed every time you had a swim meet. So then you would have, you know, storage issues there.
So we would remove something that's wildly popular, that doesn't cost anything, to put something that costs $5,000?
Well, you could put it next to the rope swing and take turns, like we do now. Sometimes we have the rope swing open, sometimes you have the slide open, sometimes you have the diving board open.
Are we considering putting in more ropes?
You could not do that, because the swing out drops you into the water. Yep.
You only have one in an entire pool?
Because they swing around.
I see.
Because of the length of the rope from the ceiling. Safety-wise, it wouldn't be room for more. So, and would those have lasting appeals, another question? They look fun. I haven't been on one, but I think it would be fun. But lots of questions. Log rolling is a new thing that I've seen. It's a styrofoam log with pads on either side, so it doesn't get near the deck. It holds one or two people at a time. You would have to time them, so everyone gets a chance, or when one person falls off, then the next person gets on. I've seen children jousting, you know, with like tinker toys on them. It could be used for all ages. They have competitions. It's fairly inexpensive, it's portable, it doesn't take a lot of space to store. And they, it would tie in with our local logging history, because people, of course, used to be on logs here.
Gail, pardon me, how many logs would you get per 10 or 12,000 dollars?
You would get two.
Two of them.
Plus training for staff and how to use them, and how to organize competition.
Thank you.
Inflatable obstacle courses are also very popular, you know, those TV shows now that have obstacle courses and competitions. They look like a lot of fun. They would take up a lot of pool space. It would take time to, you know, set them down, set them out, pick them up. Where would you store it? Would they have lasting appeal? And they're pretty expensive, but they look fun. This doesn't go in the water, but it would certainly enhance the water experience for a lot of users, and that's putting a big Jumbotron or electronic screen and timing board at the end of the natatorium on the blank wall above the small pool. You could use it for timing swim meets, for displaying pictures of swimmers or their finish times. You could use it for recreation swims, you could have music for water aerobic classes. It would really enhance our dive-in movie nights. Right now, we just show the picture on the blank wall. It works, but with a Jumbotron, you would have enhanced sound, enhanced pictures. You could sell advertising around it. It's pretty expensive. I've seen them in other pools, like the Osborne Aquatic Center in Corvallis, and it's just kind of nice when you have meets or you have events like a triathlon. It really just makes a better experience for everyone. LED underwater lights would be nice to have again. Our pool was built with underwater lights, but they were cheap, they didn't have good wiring, and then we found out that they weren't properly grounded. So of course, we discontinued use of them. Underwater lights add a lot of ambiance. You could. So these are some of the things, um, that we came up with. Replacing the Pelican with a new kind of fountain. Um, the Pelican is really popular, but it only dumps water every few minutes. The beak has to fill and then it dumps. To be honest, a lot of kids are afraid of it. They look up at that big thing and they wait for the water to hit them and they're afraid. Um, so you can do a bucket's, you know, style, um, fountain or something that just spins water all the time, and there's other ideas out there. And to do this, you could use your existing pumps and pipe, change it out fairly easily without having to dig into the deck, which is where you run into a lot of costs. Um, these are pretty popular. They're an aqua climbing wall. Um, they actually slant towards the pool, so you get up to the top and then you drop in the water. A lot of fun. Um, the disadvantage is only one or two kids can go up at a time. Um, it takes a while to climb and then you drop off. Whereas in comparison, the rope swing, you get on the rope, you fall off. The next person gets on the rope and they fall off. So this, you would wait in line a little bit longer. We have limited decks, deck space, so it would probably go where the rope swing is located now in the southeast corner of the pool. It would need to be removed every time you had a swim meet, so then you would have, you know, storage issues there.
So we would remove something that's wildly popular that doesn't cost anything to put something that costs fifty thousand?
Well, you could put it next to the rope swing and take turns, like we do now. Sometimes we have the rope swing open, sometimes you have the slide open, sometimes you have the diving board open.
Are we considering putting in more ropes?
Uh, you could not do that because the swing out drops you into the water, yep.
You only have one in an entire pool?
Because they swing around.
I see.
Because of the length of the rope from the ceiling. Safety-wise, it wouldn't be room for more.
Ah.
So, um, and would those have lasting appeals, another question? They look fun. I haven't been on one, but I think it would be fun. But lots of questions. Log rolling is a new thing that I've seen. Um, it's a styrofoam log with pads on either side, so it doesn't get near the deck. Um, it holds one or two people at a time. You would have to time them, so everyone gets a chance, or when one person falls off then the next person gets on. I've seen, um, children jousting, you know, with like tinker toys on them. Um, it could be used for all ages. They have competitions. It's fairly inexpensive, it's portable, it doesn't take a lot of space to store. Um, and they, it would tie in with our local logging history because people, of course, used to be on logs here. And then like-
Gail, pardon me, how many logs would you get per ten or twelve thousand dollars?
You would get two.
Two of them.
Plus training for staff and how to use them and how to organize competition.
Thank you.
Inflatable obstacle courses are also very popular, you know, those TV shows now that have obstacle courses and competitions. Um, they look like a lot of fun. They would take up a lot of pool space. Um, it would take time to, you know, set them down, set them out, pick them up. Where would you store it? Would they have lasting appeal? And they're pretty expensive, but they look fun. This doesn't go in the water, but it would certainly enhance the water experience for a lot of users, and that's putting a big Jumbotron or electronic screen and, um, timing board at the end of the natatorium on the blank wall above the small pool. Um, you could use it for timing swim meets, for displaying pictures of swimmers or their finish times. Um, you could use it for recreation swims, you could have music for water aerobic classes. It would really enhance our dive-in movie nights. Right now, we just show the picture on the blank wall. It works, um, but with a Jumbotron, you would have enhanced sound, enhanced pictures. Um, you could sell advertising around it. Um, it's pretty expensive. I've seen them in other pools, like the Osborne Aquatic Center in, um, Corvallis, and it's just kind of nice, um, when you have meets or you have events like a triathlon. It really, um, just makes a better experience for everyone. LED underwater lights would be nice to have again. Our pool was built with underwater, underwater lights, but they were cheap, they didn't have good wiring, and then we found out that they weren't properly grounded. So, of course, we discontinued use, um, of them. Underwater lights add a lot of ambiance. You could dim the upper lights. It increases safety when all the lights are on, because then, of course, it increases your visibility underwater. You can get them in colors, which would be kind of fun. The cost would depend on how much work it would take to install them, whether we could do it when the pool was empty through the lights themselves, or if you would have any, um, deck that you would have to dig up. And it would take an electrician to look into that. Um, so, you know, you're looking at thirteen thousand to replace all the lights with clear lights, twenty-four thousand for the bright colored lights that change colors, and then fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, you know, for labor and other parts. So, kind of a spendy project, but it would be pretty cool. I remember swimming in the pool in the mornings in the dark with just the underwater lights on. It's really a neat experience. Another idea is to convert the small pool steps to a zero entry, or another term for it is a beach entry. Um, this would make the pool accessible, or more accessible to seniors, to toddlers, to people with disabilities. You would add a couple more rails, and then you don't have to navigate those steps. Even though they are shallow, they're still difficult for a lot of people to navigate. Um, people could take walkers just straight down that ramp if needed. So that would not only make the pool safer, but more accessible to everyone. And then we're looking at, you know, infrastructure ideas. Um, you can see by the lower pictures, our pool has been added onto and remodeled so many times. It's a maze of pipes and things coming and going. So just cleaning up, that would be one project, and I don't have a price for that. You could convert the pools to ultraviolet sanitation, and I was pleasantly surprised, as was Mr. Chandler today, on how inexpensive that would be. Anywhere from twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars. And what this involves is replacing some of the tubes that you see, um, for the water going back into the pool with tubes that contain ultraviolet lights, and it hits the water with the UV rays, helps to sanitize that water, and it would reduce our chlorine, our gas chlorine, used by at least half. I don't have the, um, the exact figures because Emerald Pool Supply is working on that and they weren't able to get us, um, that figure, but they said at least by half. Right now, we're going through about ten tanks of chlorine a year, and they're about six hundred dollars a tank, so you're looking at six thousand a year for, just for chlorine for sanitation. So, you know, it would take a few years to pay for itself, but I have swam, swim in pools using UV sanitation, and it's really pleasant. The water is crystal clear, you don't have that chlorine feel and smell on you when you get out. Um, it makes for a really, really nice aquatic experience. Um, so that's one idea. Um, and then finally, um, more storage and workspace is always needed. You can see in the top-right photo, um, our facility manager fixes our exercise equipment. He does other work in the room with the boiler and the filters and, um, you know, it's not the ideal workspace, but pretty much is the only dry extra space that we have right now. So we're just, um, looking for additional ideas for a direction from the council on what direction you would like us to proceed.
Yeah?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
What are your recommendations, too? What, what, what would you like?
Um, we would really like to see some infrastructure improvements, especially the UV sanitation, um, because at the same time you installed that system, you could rework some of those pipes, you could replace some of our valves that right now leak and are pretty hard to maneuver if we ever need to, you know, shut off something or change water direction. Um, that would be a great start right there. The LED underwater lights would be another nice feature. When it comes to toys, the log rolling, I think, would be the, would be the, um, most usable by adults and children, plus they don't, it wouldn't take up a lot of, um, storage space. It'd be fun, something that's real portable in and out of the pool. Something probably similar to the rope swing, you know, real simple, but a lot of fun.
Is that something you've seen in action?
Mm-hmm.
What's the learning curve on that?
Uh, agility, balance, time.
Oh, I know, but I mean, it can't just be completely free spinning like a log, you'd never get up on it. I mean, it takes a long time to learn.
It, it takes a while. So, you know, it's something that would take a while for the people to use, to get used to it, and then they'd probably enjoy it. Um, like the rope swing, you can't do that the first time out. A lot of people get on the rope and they plop down. It takes a while to get the swing in action. It's doable.
So, I'm gonna ask Councilor Ward a question, because I think you brought forward the idea.
I did.
And is infrastructure repair upgrading that you had in mind for that money?
No, not at all.
Okay. That, that's my concern, that we even talk about that within that framework of this.
Okay.
If that wasn't included, I'd have to say, uh, my next choice would be the Jumbotron screen over the small pool, because it would be, enhance so many uses from swim meets, and the swim team would be able to host more meets a year, bringing more people to town, um, showing our pool off to more users, enhancing recreation swims, the water aerobic classes. It could be, you know, multifunctional, um, piece of equipment.
Mr. Mayor, if I could chime in a little bit, from my experience in both building pools and managing them, it's the toys. That's what brings kids back, it's the toys. And so, um, so, like Gail said, the, the log rolling, uh, would be a fun one. The, the difficulty we would have with the climbing wall, which is a really cool feature, though, is the fact that it would have to take it down. And the other challenge that we have with that is that the way our pool is designed is that you can do the swing, but you can't do the diving boards at the same time. If you do the diving boards, you can't do the, uh, you can't do the, the slide, because they, they interfere with each other. And you have to have the, uh, you have to have the, the climbing wall would have to be down in that area, the deeper end. Now, one of the features that I know is very popular is actually the Pelican. Uh, but now, what you see with those are larger buckets and, uh, and, and they have a splash pad that goes over, so instead of just dropping the water out, it splashes and it sprays all over. Now, we talked about how do you design something like that, because, uh, the, the Pelican sits at the, the waterworks sits at the edge of the pool. And so what you want to, you'd have to do is sort of splash it only go one direction and not back onto the deck. But, uh, those are very, very popular features.
If I remember right, we were at Lego this year, and, or last year, and they have a gigantic feature like that, and it basically fills this, I'll say, two-hundred-gallon bucket, and you wait, and you wait, and you wait, then it dumps it, but it does control where it comes out and how quickly, so kids can, don't have to get deluged and they get dribbled on over here. It does regulate, so.
They're usually a part of a much larger jungle gym, and they're generally in the center of the pool, and the buckets are about two-hundred-and-fifty gallons that they drop with them, again, they hit a pad, so instead of just a big drop of water, it splashes all over.
Right.
But, uh, those are, uh, I was, as I was looking at, uh, the slides and seeing the couple of peaks that were on there, and one was in two thousand and ten, um, the year before that was when the slide went in. And I had wondered, did that toy, was that the cause of the, the peak? Uh, because the one thing that you do find, and when it comes to pools, it's the toys.
So then that gets back to the original discussion, I think, of this was expanding the facility, not just adding toys to it. Is that correct?
Well, it was a, I can't recall exactly what my, uh, my motion was, but it was basically to explore, uh, aquatic, uh, elements to upgrade our, our, our facility. And, and the logic behind that is that, you know, we live in a, um, an area that has, pays limited wages, and, uh, um, so, parents that, that work as, in the industry don't have a lot of resources. And I think we're, our money is best spent when we invest back in our kids, and they have a nice place to go and hang out and have fun. And we also, it has a dual purpose, and it is an attraction for the tourists. So it's a win-win situation. The more tourists that come in here, the more TRT tax you get, the more you can invest in your infrastructure that makes it, uh, more livable for people that don't have a lot of means. So, that was the idea behind it.
And, and we saw that last week, you know, it, two-fifty a pop for children, whether they live here or in the valley. Parents were six dollars, and, you know, they came in by droves, and it was wonderful. They came through the door and they said, "Wow, what a place. We didn't know this was here." And it was great to see, you know, that many locations.
And you touched, Gail, on swim meets. Now, you said something about we can't do certain ones because we don't have a Jumbotron, or?
No, it would just enhance the swim meet experience. Right now-
Is there, what's keeping us from having more?
A, a bulkhead, which is one thing I didn't put on the list. Um, our pool is twenty-five meters long, and that suffices during some seasons of the year when swimmers swim twenty-five meters. But there's certain months of the year, and there's a lot of competitions for twenty-five yards, and so, um, our pool needs to be shortened a little bit. And they make removable bulkheads, and we used to have one, but it was stolen, I guess, years ago, when it was sat out back of the pool. And it would go in the shallow end of the pool, and just about to the T on the, the lane lines, and it shortened it to twenty-five meters. And, um, if we had that, we'd be able to host a couple more swim meets a year.
I know those have been pretty beneficial.
Including high school meets. High schools always swim.
Yeah, 'cause you, I've noticed that the, the calendar says they're all the way swim meets.
We do have a couple of mini-high school meets, but they're not official because they're in meters instead of yards.
Well, that's not a bad thing to put on the list.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Ron, if I could just add one more comment. If I, if, if we were limited to select something, which of course we would be, um, I would tend to focus on the, the kiddie pool, on the smaller pool. And the reason is because you don't have to divide the time between the other competing toys. If you, if you do something with the smaller pool, like a splash pad or, or a bucket or that kind of stuff, then it's something that, uh, that, uh, doesn't, doesn't, it can be used all the time. It doesn't have to stop being used when another toy is being used. So, if I, if I was going to select whatever that toy would be, I would probably focus on the smaller pool.
Do you have a, within the falling aquatic usage, for swim use, do you have a demographic breakdown? Are we seeing less teenagers, less children? You said the seniors are still going strong.
The seniors are going strong. The adult population is not coming.
So, to purge them?
So, we're talking twenty-five to fifty-five-year-olds.
And I'm assuming without children?
Yeah.
So, to improve the kiddie area wouldn't necessarily improve that portion?
Although they bring their children, they bring their babies.
That's my question, is, are they not coming because we don't have an area for their kids, or are they not coming because we don't have adult activities?
I, I don't know.
Well, that, that kind of gets to be an important point, if you're gonna invest money in a kiddie pool, but we're not gonna get another kid in because of it.
Well, just, just think of yourselves, okay?
I don't go in the kiddie pool.
No, no, just think of yourselves, or your children, and your grandchildren, and who goes to see, who goes to the pools? What you have in your, in your demographics is that you'll have groups that use the pools for aerobics purposes. Uh, seniors will come in and they'll have aerobics classes, and that can be done in the shallower end of the big pool. But most of the people that come to use the pool that really create the numbers are associated with kids.
From our spring break numbers, if I could add, of the thirteen hundred people who were drop-in customers last week, nine hundred and nine of them were children.
Under?
They were between ages of two and seventeen. That's what we consider youth.
Mr. Mayor?
Susan Edford.
Oh, okay.
I was just wondering, the log rolling, would that have to be done in the deep end?
Mm-hmm, yes.
That would cut off the, the swing, the slide, and the-
Yeah, it would be one of our activities, yeah.
Why would it have to be at the deep end?
When you fall off, you wouldn't want to be-
If you're just like standing on the water surface, it's not like you're dropping ten feet.
Um, what, what I read, it, it would have to be in the deep end. I could research others, uh, yeah.
Oh.
Well, no, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, I, I'm, I was shocked a little bit because I did, I wondered, what happened, you know, you mentioned a bulkhead, uh, because when my kids were involved with the swim club when they were in grade school, uh, it, we used to have several meets, and, and we did have the bulkhead. It was a crappy old bulkhead. I don't know who'd want to steal a sucker.
It was the metal, I believe, it stole the metal.
Yeah, oh, that was it, you know. But, yeah, it, that would be, you know, that would be a, a really good thing to have, uh, because we would have more swim meets, and that is an important, uh, aspect. The other thing is, and I, I hear what everybody's saying about, you know, having enhancements to the pool and, you know, and new, new toys and, and so on and so forth. Unfortunately, you can put as much decorations on a home and pretty it up as much as you want to, but if the foundations are rotting underneath the house, it doesn't do you a lot of good, 'cause the house is gonna collapse. And unfortunately, the pool needs major, and as far as I'm concerned, and I've been through that labyrinth, uh, it needs major, uh, infrastructure fixing. Uh, the UV light, uh, thing is, is, is it, so that we can cut down on the use of chlorine, um, it is a wonderful idea. And, and so, maybe that's not where the hundred dollars, or a hundred thousand dollars we were talking about was going to go, but we need to figure out a way to take care of that infrastructure and, I, I think, gettable kit, uh, because that, I think those are important aspects. Having been in a pool, uh, not too long ago, in a totally different area, that had like a Jumbotron, it was a kick in the pants, because you, um, they also had a, a camera, uh, just kind of swept back and forth. It was a purely automated camera, uh, that ran, and it, and, and so it would pop up on the, the great big giant screen, and so you would see yourself swimming, or you'd see your kids messing around in the water. It wa, it was really fun. Um, and I, I've been to a couple of, uh, swim meets where they had that big kind of a setup, and it's really nice. It enhances that whole project of, of having swim meets, and whereas that's not a great big source of money, uh, it certainly gives a great impression as to your community and your pool, so that when people want to come here, it's another level of it. There was something else that you mentioned, um, the, and, and, and the, 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 the small pool, so that you could-
Beach access.
Zero entry.
Right, zero entry. I think that's a very important thing, too. And as, and those are not real sexy, and they're not real, you know, not going to bring in gro, droves of people, but I think that those are improvements that could be done, or should be done, to the pool to enhance the whole, the whole thing. And I, uh, like you, Mayor, are, uh, am a little, um, taken aback by the fact that the school district no longer offers to give, get these kids over to a pool and, and so that they can learn how to swim, um, especially when the, the grant money was there. And I understand there is all this stinking testing that they, everybody thinks that they have to do, but I think it's important that we have children who are learning life skills, like saving your life, um, especially in, in an area where you're surrounded by water.
Yeah, I, I was under the assumption that was a requirement of going to school.
Well, it should have been.
Yeah, I thought it was.
But anyway.
No longer.
But I, I, I do like that, or, there, there are some wonderful things that you could do and all of that, but I really would like to see us, at least if we are going to do something else, that's fine, but somewhere, I think we need to find the money to fix that infrastructure and, uh, uh, at the very least, and, and I would say, and get a bulkhead.
Do we have a first, uh, budget meeting coming up?
A removable bulkhead.
Got a meeting, budget meeting coming up shortly.
Yeah.
Gail, if we were to get another bulkhead, do we have a secure place to store it when it's not- it's not us?
Or is it another material that won't get stolen?
That would be an issue, the, the storage part of it, yeah. The swim team does have a storage shed that they built outside of our, our facility, and it's possible that they would have room in there to store it.
What, what size would this bulkhead be, Gail?
Um, it has to go the width of the pool, and then it, it reduces the length from twenty-five meters to twenty-five yards, so it's about four feet, probably five feet wide. The old one was made out of metal and had plywood on the top, and plywood on the front, so that the swimmers could do their flip turns on it. So it came apart in many pieces.
It, it goes across the width of the pool?
Goes across the width of the shallow end.
It's the making of the falls.
And how wide is the pool?
Six lanes.
It's not four feet.
Boy, I don't know.
Twenty-five feet, thirty feet?
Probably twenty-five, thirty feet, yeah.
So it'd be twenty-five, thirty feet long?
The, the bulkhead would be, yes, and about four to five feet wide. And then it would be three and a half to four feet deep, or tall.
It has to block off from, you see where the tee is there, at the bottom of the pool? It has to block up from there back to the wall.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were confused on that.
I'm still confused, but we can deal with it later.
Well, basically, it extends the deck on the, the shallow end of the pool. It would extend the deck out to the tees on the end of the line, the lane, the black lines at the bottom of the pool. It would extend the deck out to that far.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I'm curious, how, um, how popular is that obstacle course? I mean, is, are there any competitions where they have teams that, that compete, that sort of thing with that?
From what I've read, yes, there is. I haven't actually seen one here in Oregon yet. I'm sure there are some. Mainly, that information I received was through trade magazines.
If money wasn't an object, I could see where it would be worth having a second pool, just on one side, and have a couple of obstacle courses and, and draw people in with that.
That would be fun.
But there again, money is an object.
Have them going at the same time, that would be fun. I'd go on it.
Yeah, in my, what's gonna steer me, or sway me, is, you know, what's gonna bring people in who don't normally come in, or who have stopped coming in? And I'm, I'm leaning towards the demographic of the teenage boy. I don't know, are they still swimming? Or if you had something physical and competitive that they could have a reason to go there?
The slide brings in a lot of teenagers. In fact, teenage boys are the ones we rescue the most off the slide. You know, when they double dog dare each other, then they don't know how to swim. Yeah.
And that would look good on a Jumbotron, too.
It would.
Okay. Can you buy, does that record, too? Can you get downloads of that, and your appearances on those things? That'd be kind of cool.
Little non-sequitur for where we are right now. How's your progress on getting a sign?
We are working on it.
Would working on it include, we, we get eighty percent of our traffic flow comes from north to south.
Mm-hmm.
The, um, the community center is a really large building, and has a big, open space right on the side of the building that's elevated, so you can't miss it if you're heading south. Have you thought at all about using the, the building and, and putting a sign up there that can be seen?
Senator, that's actually the sign she has proposed.
Really?
Yes.
I'm a child of the sixties, I pick that stuff up. Here you go.
It wouldn't be too distracting, though, would it? I want it to be...
People drive.
No, this, what I've been researching are the window screen signs that go in the windows, so they let the light in, you can see out the windows, but when you're looking at them, um, you see the advertising, like in the Samaritan Clinic that's down the street. There's a company in Eugene that will design and install for about four thousand dollars, that set of windows that's up in the top of the building.
And was there a wave option? Anything along those lines for a pool, is that feasible?
Way too much money. Yeah, way too much money.
Just I don't know reasons. Okay, any other questions? We have exhausted the heck out of that one. Thank you, Gail, appreciate it. Now, do we need to make a decision tonight, or you're looking for some direction?
Looking for some direction.
Well, I think you had two votes for log rolls. Do you want to do it that way? Do you want to just kind of give your druthers, starting down west? Do you want to, you wanted the Jumbotron?
Yeah, I, I, I think that that would be, well, I mean...
Well, we're just trying to get...
The LED, the LED lights in, in the pool and the Jumbotron, to me, would be something really, that would, there's a lot you could do with that, which I think, somebody being very creative, good sound system, and you could have party nights, and, you know, whatever.
Does it require a co, a camera operator?
Mr. Mayor? I would think that that UV sanitation system is really worthwhile.
I think that's my first choice.
Yeah, but...
My first choice would be the, the infrastructure, period.
But is that what we set the money aside for? Maybe you can get that next budget. Yeah, next budget, definitely. Yeah. So if you had your druthers, then as far as the other things...
That's my number, oh, the other things?
Yeah, the toys.
Oh.
That's what Gail's...
I don't have, I don't really have a, uh...
You like the obstacle course?
Well, yeah, but that doesn't fit in there, though. I don't think.
Okay. Jake, anything?
No, I, I, I don't have an opinion, I'm not...
What about improving the kiddies areas over the grown-up areas? Yeah, okay. Susan?
What were the prices on those, on those things, the UV and the, uh, the zero entry?
Uh, the UV, we're looking at twenty-one to twenty-five thousand, and the zero entry, around forty to fifty thousand.
You could do those, too, and then squeeze something else in.
Buy one lot instead of two.
Hey, Gail. Hey, Susan, anything?
Um, I think the UV sanitation is a good thing to do, like next budget. It's a cost savings. Um, I like the Jumbotron idea, but I think the, the bulkhead could enable us to have more swim meets, too, and that's good for the economy.
Mr. Commissioner?
Yeah, I, I like the bulkhead, UV sanitation, and updating the plumbing.
Well, you gotta have something to sizzle, or you're gonna have all this underground and nobody's there, you know, stuff. I'd go with the, the big ob, what the hell's it called?
Jumbotron?
Jumbotron.
Jumbotron.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think we, we're not the experts, you know? Gail's the expert, but that would be my preference.
Well, we also have the option of upgrading the kiddie area, too, but, yeah. Okay, so for me, I, I definitely would go with the bulkhead. I, I think that's, would just enhance the use of that pool so much. I like the idea of Jumbotron, but I would want to know more about it. I, I don't know what kind of lifespan those have, and who maintains them and services them and all that. And then the log rolls, I definitely think that would be a fun thing to have.
Okay.
So that's where we start again.
Gail, do you have a price for the bulkhead?
I don't have a price for the bulkhead, no.
One, one other question. With that UV system, you don't have to worry about the pH balance anymore in the pool?
No, you still have to worry about the pH balance, yeah.
Okay.
Is that different than an ozone?
Yes, it is. And from my reading and from taking the Certified Pool Operator Course, ozone sanitation is not as efficient as ultraviolet or as saline, and...
Hyperphone? I can't hear you.
The ultraviolet is the most effective use, or way to, to, to clean the water.
To reduce chemicals.
Oh, yeah.
And saline's out of the question for us due to the age of our pipes. They're all metal.
So I don't think you're gonna have any battles when you come before us at budget time. Pretty much got that one in the bag. Okay, well, that's, I guess that's it.
All right, well, that's helpful. I'll come back with more information on some of these ideas. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Gail. Okay, City Manager, City Attorney reports. I guess we'll go to Mr. Avicello first, here.
I do not have anything. However, on the agenda is an opportunity for you to take actions, if any, based on discussions in executive session.
Anyone want to make a motion on that?
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor. I move that we direct staffed, staff to reject a settlement offer from a contractor on the Cutler City job, and offer to negotiate further.
Motion and second, any discussion? Do I need a roll call on that? Yeah, and, and no objection, roll call, please.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Oricus?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Sprague?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Mr. Chandler?
Nothing.
Wow, the whole meeting, nothing.
End of the day.
Okay, well, you do, you've got your VRD discussion coming up tomorrow night.
Two more meetings tomorrow night, and Wednesday night. Tomorrow's at the community center at six PM, and Wednesday is here at six PM as well.
Okay, any advice for anyone? Have you noticed anything that maybe is going astray that you want to correct people on?
No, no, the meetings have been great. Really enjoyed them. We're hoping to finish it off strong, and then we go forward with that and bring back information to you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? Anyone seeing no one in the audience? Okay, announcements or com, announcements or comments by city council? Mayor? Chester?
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge and appreciate firefighter Captain Jim Kooz. He's been named as a recipient of the 2015 Golden Sparky Award, given by the State Fire Marshal for Outstanding Achievement in Prevention or Public Safety Education. I believe that's achievement in fire prevention and public safety education. Thank you so much, Captain Kooz. I attended one of your sessions at the Community College a few months ago regarding preparedness for tsunami earthquake, and it was a packed crowd, and a very good presentation. Thank you so much for all your work. Also, I've got a few items I'd like to share with the public from Mr. Chandler's weekly reports. The city has turned on all the water fountains and footwash units before spring break. We are waiting on parts to repair, too, that were broken. So the public now has access to footwash and fountains in our, at our beach accesses. Also, I'd like to thank Joe Miller, and appreciate him for saving the city about a thousand dollars in parts for ADA electric parts for the Canyon Park restrooms. Well done, Joe Miller. He's the foreman, is he, of the parks?
Yes.
Department, Mr. Chandler?
Yes, sir.
Thank you again, Joe. And I'd like to share with the public what's happening a little bit with the Northwest Harbor Avenue improvement. The road is really torn up. Construction update. Devil's Lake Rock was issued a notice to proceed on September fifteen, two thousand and fifteen, five months ago. They did not begin construction on this project until February twenty-two, two thousand and sixteen. Contract complete date is April twenty-nine, two thousand and sixteen. They have requested a time extension to May twentieth. First phases of the work include stormwater pipe and catch basin installation, sewer replacement, and building the retaining wall north of fif, northwest fifteen. They've encountered utility conflicts and found several previously unknown sewer and storm laterals. To date, they have about fifty percent of the storm and sewer work complete, and about fifty percent of the wall completed. Also, there's a very extensive memo regarding the need for a new police department building. If anybody's interested, they can, is this on the website, Mr. Chandler?
It isn't.
It is?
It is not.
It is not. Anybody who's interested in this report, a very good report regarding the need for a, a new police building, can feel free to call me, five four one nine nine six three seven five five. And I think I've got one more here. No, I don't. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please.
Like everyone, I thank, thank everyone who came to the spaghetti and no balls dinner. Uh, that's for this spay and neuter program the Humane Society puts on. We raised just short of three thousand dollars, and all that money went to the, uh, the Humane Society. So if you came, thank you very much, and if you didn't, uh, yeah, that's it.
Just two quick things. We have a lake searing meeting on the fourth at three PM. That'd be here in council chambers, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's still on. Public can attend, but it's a work session?
Correct.
Okay. And then I wanted to say a thank you to Mo's Restaurant for hosting the sunrise service for the North Lincoln Ministerial Association. It's an annual event where they go to the dock and then, and have worship and prayer time for Easter Sunday, but as the dock is closed, we couldn't do it there. So Mo's graciously offered to let them use the restaurant, and it went off beautifully, so I wanted to say thank you to them, as always, for stepping up when, when there's a need. Anyone else?
Just to piggyback on the Mo's thing, a lot of people are not aware of it, but Mo's has a table, one of their tables where people eat, and anybody who eats there, they, what they, what they spend goes to the school system or goes to support kids. And they do that year round, which is phenomenal.
Is that something you can request?
Yeah, just ask for the kids' table, and, and what you spend there will go to kids.
Fantastic, okay. With that, I say God bless you all, God bless Lincoln City. We are adjourned.